All right, I called this meeting of Norfolk School Board Work Session to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Here.
Camson.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Ralston.
Here.
Martin.
Present. Mr. Clayton will be joining us soon, so he's just, he's gonna be late today. Okay, first on our agenda, we have item 2.01, the Proposed NPS Academic Calendar for School Year 22 through 23. Dr. Poehl be presenting.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Clayton, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here to share the options that were developed for the 22-23 academic calendar, as well as a recommendation.
Good afternoon, teachers, staff, and scholars. May I add your contribution for the academic announcement? We hope you all had a fantastic day of teaching and learning. As you are dismissed, please be sure to walk in in orderly fashion. Teachers and staff, please assist in doing so. As always, have a safe, respectful, and responsible afternoon. We will see you all tomorrow. We will begin dismissal in about three minutes.
We have three minutes.
All teachers, this is a reminder that all call riders will go to the media center, and all champion scholars will go to the pre-K comments area for today's dismissal.
All right, so I'm here for recommenda- with recommendations also for next year's academic calendar. This presentation will review the regional similarities, calendar guidelines, the development process, the four options, inclement weather days for each of the options, and the survey data. Across the region, on this side of the water, divisions attempt to create similarities on the major portions of their calendars. This year, all divisions will be opening after Labor Day, the November Election Day is a teacher workday, winter breaks are closely aligned, although not identical, spring breaks are all in the same week, and currently only one division has school scheduled for January 2nd, which is the observed holiday for New Year's Day. Let's take a moment to review the guidelines, followed to develop the calendar. The length of the school year is at least 180 teaching days or 990 teaching hours. This time requirement excludes lunch, however instructional time may include recess for up to 15% of the school day. The elementary stagger, which has the least amount of student time, has six hours and 25 minutes per full day, or 355 minutes, and 235 minutes for early release days. The Calendar Committee members listed on this slide were an integral part of developing the options being presented tonight. In the initial meeting, they were given the parameters shared on the last slide, and asked to start from scratch to develop what they felt were the best options for next year's academic calendar. Here is a breakdown of the development process. In December, there was a regional meeting to discuss needed alignments across divisions. Then in January, the NPS Calendar Committee had their first meeting. When leaving that meeting, each member was tasked with discussing the possibilities for developing academic calendar with peers. Each member was asked to submit a draft prior to the next meeting. In an effort to gain additional teacher input, a similar activity was conducted at the January Teacher Forum Meeting. Here, where there's a teacher represented from every school, they were asked to review the information with their peers, and also to submit a sample calendar. At the January 20th Calendar Committee meeting, team members reviewed the submitted options in breakout rooms to choose or design what they felt would be the best academic calendar for Norfolk Public Schools. From this meeting, drafts were reviewed, and the four drafts' calendars were created. At the February, at the February 9th meeting, the committee finalized the top four draft choices, and on the 18th, a survey was sent out to all stakeholders. Highlights of option one are as follows. There are a total of 175 in-person days and three asynchronous learning days. This creates a total of 1,027 instructional hours. The Thanksgiving holiday is three full days, and the winter holiday is 11 full business days. Additionally, teacher workdays are spread throughout the year in October, March, and May, with no early release days beyond exam days at the end of the year. Finally, the last day of school is also the last day for teachers. For option two, there are a total of 175 in-person days and two asynchronous learning days, creating still a total of 1,027 instructional hours. Thanksgiving and winter holidays are the same as option one, and there are workdays in October, February, and March, as well as one after the last day of school. There are also no early release days beyond exam days at the end of the year. Highlights of option three are as follows. This calendar has the 180 days in person, with no asynchronous learning days, creating a total of 1,045 instructional hours. Thanksgiving holiday would be the traditional early release day and two full days, and winter break would be eight business days. This one also offers two teacher workdays between semesters, and has early release days on Fridays in September, October, February, and March, and the last day of school is also the last day for teachers. Finally, with option four, this calendar has 179 in-person days with one asynchronous learning day, creating a total of 1,045 instructional hours. The Thanksgiving holiday would be the traditional early release day and two full days, and winter break would be eight business days, sorry, would be the 11 business days again. This one has one teacher workday between semesters, and has early release days on Fridays in October, February, March, and the last day of school is also the last day for teachers. In order to prepare for the possibility of inclement weather days, the Calendar Committee discussed options at the last meeting in February. As seen on this slide, options one and two would use teacher workdays if they were beyond three days needed, leaving 19 hours beyond the minimum requirement, and options three and four would all use bank time, still having 25 hours beyond the minimum requirement of time. There were a total, there was a total of 2,231 responses at the close of the community input survey. The majority of the respondents, or 58%, were received from teachers.
Please dismiss all walkers at this time. Please dismiss all walkers at this time.
So 58% were received from teachers and staff, who are representing 1,288 respondents, and 35% from parents or guardians, which was 781 respondents. 4.4%, or 98%, were from students. Overwhelmingly, the responses favored either option one or option two. When combining all categories of respondents, 57% chose option one, 34% chose option two, 5.6% option three, and 5.7% option four. Based off the committee work and the community survey data, the administration is recommending option one for the 22-23 academic calendar. Thank you for allowing me this time to discuss the process and options for the 22-23 academic calendar. At this time, we're prepared for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Poehl? Go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Thank you, Dr. Poehl. I know my microphone's this way, but I'm gonna try to face that way. So, if we could back up for just a minute. So you, I think I heard you say that the committee wanted to start from scratch, looking at this. Can you talk a little bit about what factors were at play to, I guess, drive that perspective? Like, what, I guess, I guess a broader question is, what, what was the goal? Like, in terms of, you know, just looking at the committee members, I see you have four principals, you know, the executive directors, you know, transportation, payroll, HR. You know, you have the stakeholders that, you know, are boots on the ground, and then the operations piece of it. And I was just wondering if you could share a little bit more about that perspective, because, you know, as I said last year, one of the perspectives that I have is, you know, our calendar is there, you know, we have this guidelines of the number of days and the number of instructional hours, but what do we hope to achieve in that calendar period? And, you know, to promote student achievement and other outcomes, positive outcomes for our students. And so, I don't know if, it sounded like there might have been something in the thought process from the committee members, you know, to start from scratch, so I was just wondering if you had.
So, absolutely. So, we, we really set the parameters of what I shared on the side, is that at 180 days or 990 hours, we, we started with a calendar that had holidays that we had to have on there. We had to have Election Day off, and then, you know, the regional similarities we put on the calendar as well. And that was the blank slate we started with. The, the goal was...
Please dismiss all bus riders and van riders at this time. Please dismiss all bus riders and van riders at this time. All scholars have been dismissed. Again, all scholars have been dismissed.
So, the goal was to have a calendar that balanced, you know, the, obviously the student needs and instructional needs with the teacher needs. So, not only was it that one committee that, and it also had teachers on that, that central committee, but that's why we also chose to take it to Teacher Forum, where there are 50 teachers, and to hear their voices, and to get their feedback on what, what is important to you. And that, one of the things that came out of those committee meetings were the, the early release days. After this year having full days, they said it's much more productive, because the early release days, they're tired. So, doing work after that is almost, not nearly as beneficial as what they've had this year. So, trying to create a calendar that has a bit of teacher sanity in it, as well as the instructional time for students, the, the teachers all, the teacher feedback always around. They feel better teaching, knowing there's a, if you look at the calendars they, they chose, there's a, there's a workday or a holiday every single month. So, there's some reprise for a teacher at some point.
Great. So, oh...
Go ahead, I have a question after you.
Along those lines, I guess, you know, and I appreciate the regional perspective, you know, showing where the similarities and differences are. But, you know, I feel a lot of my hesitation, like, I, I like, from, from a holiday perspective and days off perspective, I like option one. But then when I think about what our student needs are, based on our data, and based on just thinking, you know, how is this working for our students? And how do we be, I guess, more creative or more innovative in, in the way we imagine the, the school calendar? I think about, you know, we advocated for years to have that pre-Labor Day start, and yet we consistently shy away from making that decision to start before Labor Day, which we know, you know, would allow a more relaxed pacing for our teachers, would allow, you know, real deeper learning from our students to prepare for the, you know, especially at the secondary level for AP classes and, and other exams, that, you know, I get, the question is, why are we not taking advantage of the opportunity that we have in front of us? And then providing additional breaks, you know, throughout the year? And then even for our students, where we know we have, where we know generally speaking that longer school years, you know, would be beneficial to reduce the impact of the summer slide or provide opportunities, equitable opportunities for all of our students, why we're not looking at other approaches to extending the school year while providing, you know, healthy breaks throughout? Even if we're doing it, like, on a pilot basis at some schools, and then seeing how that works? I mean, I, I just, I feel like, and this is not an NPS thing, but I feel like districts are just doing the same old thing, when we know that other strategies do work and are beneficial for our students. So, I don't, I guess, I don't understand why we don't take advantage of those opportunities.
So, I will let you know that when we had the regional meeting, and then we, we bounced emails back and forth, that there have been a couple of emails that are talking about considering looking at that for the following school year, and a pre-Labor Day start, starting the possibility of it. So, it is a part of the discussion that, that we're having on it. Right now, you know, fortunately with the ESER funds being able to provide free summer learning for all students is, is really extending that school year even more than we could with, with other, because you still have the contractual obligations if you extend, you have still, but so many teaching days that you can have based on the contract that we'd be looking at. So, right now, we consider the extension with the ESER funds to, to provide summer school, to help with that summer slide for all students and any students, and even acceleration for our students more beneficial at this point, but we have, we've broached the topic across the regions about discussing it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the Labor Day, the pre-Labor Days, potentially pre-Labor Days, pre-Labor Day start. As a parent, it's very frustrating, because for some reason, it seems that the camps in the area, they start in June, when, or they start early, and they end early in August, or before August. And it's like, well, they're, they're starting with, I think, it seems to me they're catering more to the private school summer calendar than to the public school summer calendar. And so, as a parent, it's very frustrating when we're starting so late and don't have any options for our kids all day. And so, I too was disappointed that did not see a, a pre-Labor Day start option, especially when there are four options. You know, and I think at that point, kids are, and parents are kind of ready to get them back to school. The other thing I have a question about is the January 2nd day off for New Year's, was that New Year's Eve or New Year's Day holiday? Can you explain, so I guess my question is, it, to me, I looked at the calendars, I thought, yay, you know, the two weeks off, which everyone loves, but then that extra day seems like a little drag, like, couldn't we get back to school? It just, I would have liked to have seen that extra day placed somewhere else to add some more breaks throughout the calendar, more long weekends. So, my question is, why, why would that be on the 2nd? Is there, could it be, have been on the Friday before, or is there some type of rule that you can't have it before the date that you're observing?
Yeah, the, the rule is, it, it, if it's on a Sunday, it's the Monday. If it's on a Saturday, it's the Friday before. And we learned this, I think it was Juneteenth, maybe, for this year's observation. It, when we changed the calendar, it had, it had to fall on the Monday. Originally, we wanted to do it on the Friday, but it had to fall on the Monday, because it's, it follows the Sunday. And that's the, the federally observed day is on the 2nd, which is why it's the holiday. However, as a, as a board, we're not required to follow all the federal holidays if you wanted to vote differently. However, you know, the thought was with being a heavy military town, you know, as well, that that 2nd might be a travel day for a lot of our families, which is why it was on the, on the calendar as a holiday. And like I said, only one of the other divisions in the region currently is, is attending school on January 2nd.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yes, first, I'd just like to echo what I think I heard my previous two colleagues mention in terms of a lack of, well, I won't say a lack of. I'd like to have seen a more, a deeper consideration of a pre-Labor Day start. We, we talked about this last year, and we've talked about it for quite a while. And I do understand the, the regional collaboration piece, but I think our data and our needs are unique to Norfolk, and that we need to consider options that are best for the children of Norfolk. And while, even if we did not consider a district-wide pre-Labor Day start, I still think that we need to be looking at more instructional time for, for our children, and hope to talk about that some more later with the proposed budget. The other thing I wanted to, well, I have a question, then I have something I wanted to comment on. With the 781, I think it was parent responses or community responses, can't remember the exact category that you had, was any type of profile done with those responses to determine who they were, what part of the city? Were they families of walkers, bus drivers, you know, walkers, bus riders, any, any type of demographic profile at all?
There was not.
Okay, so I just want to continue to ask that we do that so that when we are looking at survey data, we're able to see whether or not the responses that we're getting, to what extent they are representative of the student population as a whole in particular. And then, I've heard from parents, especially over the last couple of years, with the pandemic and everything being so virtual, a desire to see in-person parent-teacher conference days come back. Did you all have any discussion about providing an opportunity for parent-teacher conference day on, on one of the days, workday or any other day that you've identified on the calendar?
We have not had a discussion on the parent-teacher conference day.
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, I think that ultimately, the, if I understand this process correctly, we're receiving a recommendation, and the board has to, would vote on what the final consideration is. And I would at least like for us to have some discussion prior to vote on the possibility of a parent-teacher conference day, for sure. I suspect it may be too late in the season to consider an early start, but I'd like for us to have a conversation about that and establish some level of expectation of the board so that next year, or this coming year, when the committee gets together, that if it's the will of the board to have the committee to take a look at early, early start before Labor Day, that there's some effort in that regard. Thank you.
Dr. Poehl, can you describe how the parent-teacher conference days are, have been worked into the calendar?
In the, in the past, there, there used to be two days between semesters that would accommodate some of that, and I believe in the past, Election Day has been used as a parent-teacher workday as well. I could research that further, though, to make sure.
Okay. Anyone wanted to share their views on reintroducing the parent-teacher conference days? Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
So, with regard to the parent-teacher conference day, Dr. Birdsong, is that something that you have seen in the past as being overall a successful event where parents have been able to come and engage with teachers? Because I would support it if parents are going, if they know ahead of time, if it's planned ahead in the calendar, we certainly want to increase parental engagement. I don't necessarily know that it could happen by the time our vote occurs for this particular calendar, and certainly, I think parents have already, stakeholders have voted on an option that they feel best, but I wouldn't be opposed to it in planning for this upcoming year. And then, after I hear from Dr. Birdsong, then I'll share my thoughts on the pre-Labor Day start.
Quite honestly, my experience with parent-teacher conference days was as a building principal, so I've not had that experience where I'm sitting now, or for the last several years. I'm thinking that there was a reason based upon the community's feedback, the parent-teacher conference days were taken off the calendar. I just cannot say with confidence right now what that could have been. But I, I'm pretty confident that the parents who engaged in the conferences probably found them to be beneficial. But again, I, I could not tell you today why that was taken off the calendar years ago. And again, my recollection of parent-teacher conference days was years ago when I was a building principal, and I can imagine that parents who signed up to participate found it to be, I'm hoping, productive.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of parent-teacher conference day, pre-email, pre-accommodations to, to parents. I know that a lot of schools make accommodations to have parents come in and discuss with their teachers items of concern. So, I, if it's something that the board would like to have further discussion on for the next calendar year, I'm certainly open to it. And with regards to the pre-Labor Day start, I, I think that that is a very complex issue, which, you know, first, we had to overcome the hurdle of allowing us to actually have the ability to, to choose our calendar. That's with the items that occurred with the General Assembly some time ago. And now that we have that, I think that there's, there's, if you wanted to put a working group together with regards to, you know, teacher unions, contracts, and things like that, that is going to be a big endeavor. It's not something that I don't think could be attainable. And certainly, whatever the needs of our students are, we want to address those based upon their data. But it, it's gonna be a complex item and a big shift. And for teachers who work in our division, who have children in other divisions, I can understand the need to try to provide the regionalism aspect of it. But at the end of the day, we do have to do what's best for our students. And if that's an option that the board would like to get further information on, to see if it would be beneficial, then I can support that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Mr. Jordan, did you have something? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Camson.
Oh.
Ms. Basine, and then Mr. Jordan.
I'm half a dozen years out of a principal seat, too, in an elementary, in your secondary, and we know that it's very different, but they, and times have changed, speeding by. But at that time, they were extremely beneficial for our school, and our teachers, and our parents, and our children. We were packed. Many teachers had to do so, to add on some before-school morning meetings, because the lower the grade, the more parents were involved. And in the kindergartens, and they often had to do the day, and then for the next week, bring parents then in the mornings that they couldn't get to, it was that well-attended. But not as much as you, as you went through the grades. So, and, and there was a lot of things that we did, because we were tracking their data, and so we could sit there with the parents for children that were struggling, and say, here, this is what's happening to him on his monthly assessments. And these are some things that we can work together on to help him improve. And it was face-to-face, sometimes face-to-face. I know we're all doing texting and emails, but there's a lot to be said for face-to-face when you come to talk about children and their education. So, I would like us to see us, look, I know it's too late for this coming year, but I'd like to see us revisit and see how much social media and all that has taken away, and is it really becoming a good substitute for those face-to-faces, at least at the elementary school level? And I would think even through middle school, of course, Dr. Birdsong can talk about middle school better, and I only did one year of high school, so. But at the elementary schools, I would encourage us to at least explore if it would be as beneficial in these times as it was half a dozen years ago. That's, that's only, you know, six years ago, but things have changed so rapidly. So, that's what I would say, I'd be happy to participate in that.
Thanks, Ms. Camson. Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
And I'd also like to add, I don't want the takeaway to be that principals and teachers aren't meeting with parents in person, because they are.
Yeah, they are.
I was actually gonna wrap up with that, because I know that maybe the reason it was taken off the schedule is because it was mandated days district-wide, or school by school, I don't know. But that, they wanted, maybe schools wanted the flexibility to schedule them around their own calendars. But anyways, go ahead, Ms. Basine. Did you have something to add?
I had a question, and you might be able to refresh my memory, Dr. Birdsong. So, when our students are scheduled to take the PSAT in school, which, you know, we, we do offer that opportunity for our students, is it always on a Saturday? Or, I don't know if you'll know that...
I don't, I don't believe it is always on a Saturday, no.
It's on a school day, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, one of, one of the thoughts, and that's what I, I thought, it's been a couple, a couple of years, but, you know, one thing I would like to see, and I don't know if this could be incorporated, or how, how much it would impact the academic calendar that's proposed, but I would also like to see an SAT day that is put into our school calendar, that is a school day where students would have access to taking the SAT during the school year, on a school day where they already have transportation to come in to take the test, which would create, you know, again, thinking about equity and opportunity for our students. That's something that I would like to see us do this school year, but that may not impact the calendar, which is why I was asking if we already do that, then... which is why I was asking if we already do that, then perhaps that's something the administration can look at.
And I don't want, I think that's scheduled outside of the school division, I don't think we have total responsibility for that. I think it's more of a regional coordination. I've not myself been involved in the intimate planning, but I imagine that, Dr. Paul, you and your role as chief academic officer may have, can you speak more to that?
I can. So there is an option with College Board to do a during-the-school-day SAT, and it's not as much the calendar as it would be the budget. So there would be a cost to that, and I'd have to research what the recent cost is. It's lower, it's not the same per pupil price as it is to take it on a Saturday because we're staffing it, but there is a cost to do it during the school day. So if we wanted to offer it to all of our juniors, then I'd have to research that and come up with a budgetary amount to be able to offer it to all of our juniors, similar to like the PSAT. We pay for the PSAT, but that's, I think, nine or $10 a student. The SAT, I think, is upwards of around $30 a student, so it would definitely have a cost implication to it. But calendar-wise, it would just be like organizing an assessment on that day. It would still be a school day, the kids would still come, they'd have the transportation. So it is a possibility, but it's more the cost than the academic calendar.
Okay, so then I could save that for the budget discussion.
It's $14, just so you know.
$14?
That's for the PSAT, he's talking about for the SAT.
Oh, I was saying the PSAT is.
Is it up to 14 now?
Yeah, I've recently paid that. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
One, I just wanted to say, yeah, I think there's plenty of time for consideration of the parent-teacher conference day and time for consideration on the 16th. And then I also just wanted to repeat that I wasn't sharing my own view, I was sharing that I have received calls from parents that have recommended or requested or asked about the return of the in-person parent-teacher conference day because they thought it would be beneficial for them and their children. And, you know, personally, even, you know, during my day, we had email and apps and all kinds of stuff, but I never missed a parent-teacher conference day. And what I was hearing from parents was, with all the technology, yes, it's great, but it still provides at least one or two days a year where the parent can sign up and have the opportunity to have that in-person attention in addition to whatever other opportunities exist. So I was just representing what I heard that parents asked me to bring forward in regards to the calendar. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, go ahead, Dr. Rousen.
Clearly, the stakeholders have spoken on the, you know, the calendar and not including it, but I do have a personal outlook about it. I think every day should be parent-teacher conference day, and schools have to be accommodating. And there are different views about parent-teacher conference in terms of what it means. I don't have the data for no public schools, but in some schools and some districts and national research, it's the same parents that come, and a lot of the parents who come are not necessarily parents who need it the most. So it's a lot of data on what that all means, and obviously, in the stakeholders and the people, you know, who looked at this and made the decision, obviously, they read some of that, but I think every day is a, should be, a teacher-parent conference day, and any parent should be able to go to any school at any time to talk to a teacher or whomever if they need to for their child, and not just a set day, because I think a lot of the visits to schools anyway are situational, and it may not, that day may not be the best day for a parent to go into a school to talk to a teacher, anyway, because it's something that happened three weeks or months before that. So I think it's an interesting call, but I think I understand it. Thank you.
Yeah, there are so many ways that the teachers are communicating to the parents, but I do think that I respect the, I guess, the discretion of the teachers to be able to make meetings as needed instead of waiting for days, but I would appreciate giving us some history, look into why, you know, why they were taken off the calendar so we can have a better understanding to form our decision on the 16th.
I'm sorry, I was on the board when we did that, I mean, it wasn't that long ago that we removed it, and we had that discussion, what Dr. Rousen said was part of the discussion then. What I was hearing from parents, part of the motivation was, we weren't two to three years out of a pandemic where people had felt this distance, and so part of it was to have the opportunity to reconnect, and it was never intended, even when we had parent-teacher conference day, that it was a zero-sum game, you know, it's all or nothing. It was just time that was focused in addition to all the other things that we've talked about tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions about the calendar, comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Paul.
My pleasure.
Up next, we have NPS employee appreciation bonus. Dr. Birdsong has some recommendations presented by Mr. Jenkins. Go ahead and start when you're ready.
Sure. Good afternoon, Dr. Martin, members of the School Board, Dr. Birdsong. Let's see, we want to talk about employee appreciation bonuses tonight or this evening. So we are proposing one for this year. The purpose, of course, is to reward employees whose dedication has been very much appreciated under very extreme, very difficult circumstances, both this year and previous year. The timing would be that we would recommend the distribution of bonuses on April 8th, which is the day before, but it's a Friday before the spring break. The recommendation is that the reward would be $2,500 for eligible employees, and we'll talk about that. And again, there would be an equitable proration based on time worked, so if an employee started in October, they wouldn't get the full bonus. Those who started earlier in the year would. And we also have, we would make this available to part-time employees, and those bonuses would be based on the time worked as compared to a equivalent position. This is a little different from the bonus that was provided last year in that the employees would be responsible for federal and state taxes. The net would be, for each, would be just over $1,600. Could be higher or lower depending on taxes, other taxes and deductions. So again, the reward was $2,500 for eligible employees. It would include all contract employees, and again, full bonus for employees starting before, on September 30th or before, and prorated after that. Long-term substitutes and part-time employees would also be included, but as those that are not contracted, and again, it would be prorated based on the amount of time they worked. And bonuses that were very small, under $100, and generally, that's just, that's less than 20 hours of work, would not be recommended. Our rationale is appreciation for the staff and the hard work they've done. This has, again, been a difficult year with the coronavirus constantly coming and going, excessive vacancies across all classifications, which means the other employees have to pick up the work. This has been especially the case with the very, with the probably larger shortage of substitutes. In many cases, we just can't get subs, which means that teachers have to, or students, classes have to be split, other teachers have to take on additional duties. There's a high level of stress, and we would also believe that this would help with our retention efforts. The employee groups specifically that would receive the bonus, again, all full-time or contracted employees, long-term teachers, long-term substitute teachers and teacher assistants, part-time lunchroom monitors, our part-time school nutrition assistants and substitutes, and then substitutes and part-time custodians, bus drivers and bus attendants. So most all of our employees. As far as funding the vacancy savings, I've mentioned, and I think some of you have asked me several times about vacancy savings, we do have a significant vacancy savings, so we have enough money in the budget to pay for this proposal. At this point, we're projecting about $20 million of savings in the general fund. That is, we funded positions that have been vacant, and the savings that accrue because of that equate to about 20 million. It would also include where a very seasoned teacher or employee retired and we had a new person replace them earning substantially less money. Savings are also accruing in practically all other funds, so our title funds, our grant funds, the child nutrition fund, practically all funds have savings. The bonus would not apply, excuse me, would only apply to NPS personnel. Specifically, this bonus doesn't apply to CSEP, although I believe CSEP has a separate bonus recommendation, and it does not apply to the governor's school. The employees of nutrition services and those that are funded out of a grant fund, those funds would cover the cost. And in most cases, there is, there are sufficient funds, but if there is a fund that does not have enough money, the general fund will cover those costs. This is a bad graph, I suppose, our table, it's got a lot of numbers on it, but these are the estimated costs by fund. So you see the first line, general fund, there are 3,841 positions, and I believe these are employees, actually. The bonus calculation is just over nine and a quarter million. There are employer taxes that we would be responsible for of 708,000, which brings the total cost for the general fund at just below $10 million. Similarly, the cost for child nutrition or school nutrition is 797,000. There are costs for Title I, Title 6B, state-operated funds, these include the jail, the teachers at the jail, at the detention home, and the children's hospital. There are 30 positions in those facilities, and they would bear those costs. And then there's a number of grants with 31 employees that have a cost of $82,000. And again, those funds would pay for the cost to the extent they're able, and if they can't, then the general fund would. So the total cost, $11,712,000. Dr. Martin, that is what I had for the bonuses, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Dr. Birdsong?
I just wanted to reiterate that we really feel that this bonus would go a long way in demonstrating to our staff that we really appreciate them. This has been a very challenging school year. We're recovering from the pandemic, we've had lots of vacancies, many staff members have had to double and triple their loads, and we feel like, although it's only a monetary demonstration of how we appreciate what they've done, I just need to reiterate that it's been a challenging year, and this will be just something very small, but large, an appreciation of our, a demonstration of our appreciation for all that they've done throughout the year. And I think that our employees would certainly be very excited about this bonus. And I know one question may be, because last year, when we went through this process, there were groups who felt like they were left out, and so, again, if you will review the memo that I gave to you, it outlined specifically who would be eligible, and it would be all of the groups that ended up getting a bonus last year, including the groups that were approved after the initial bonus was given. So it would include all of those employees. In addition to, I think there were two other groups that we did add because they are part-time and they would necessarily be eligible, would be the part-time bus attendants and bus, part-time bus drivers. Those are the two new groups added to the groups that previously qualified for the bonus. So we appreciate your consideration of this bonus.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or need clarification? Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel, and then Mr. Jordan, and then Ms. Bessine.
Dr. Birdsong, I think this is a tremendous demonstration of how much we value and care about the work that everybody is doing in the building in order to meet the needs of our children. And when you say all of the employees, truly, I can understand that. I mean, just in my experiences alone, I know that there are individuals out breeding children, making sure that, you know, if their masks are on now, that they're on properly. They are monitoring the cafeteria, they are covering for other teachers, they're doing whatever they can in order to make children feel welcome and as normal as they can during this time, but at the same time, they're also supporting one another. And in your slide, where it talks about expressing appreciation, excessive vacancies, stress among staff, retention of staff, you can do that for a lot of different work entities, not just education, but not other, other entities are not rewarding employees the way that you are right now. And so that is different, and that is something to say for what you are trying to do. And I know that you're looking at other options, too, with regards to covering classes and hiring and all of those other things, but this is very thoughtful, and as you said, it's not everything that we would like to do for the teachers, but it is something. And thank you for bringing this to our attention for a vote, and I'll be happy to support this.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Actually, I was going to, you know, had we had the opportunity to approve the agenda, I was going to recommend that we put the proposed budget first and then consideration of bonuses and unassigned funds and other things after that. I'm not opposed to the idea of doing the bonus, but I think from the School Board's perspective, our job at this point is to really have a good understanding of the needs of the division as a whole, understand all of the sources that we have available to us, whether they're one-time funds or new funds that we may be requesting, state funds and so forth, and then have an understanding of all the proposed uses, so then we can have a holistic discussion around how do we then take the resources that we have or the resources that we want to request in order to move the needle on the goals that we've established. So I'm not so sure about the, you know, the, doing it by April the 8th. I think we should go through a budget process, hear the budget presentation, have the full understanding of the items I just mentioned, and then have an understanding of how the bonus, the unassigned fund balance and anything else fits into that big picture so that as a board, we can make sure that we are making holistic and responsible decisions to advance the goals that we've established. So, thank you.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but just the part that I don't understand is, this is coming out of our current funds, and we're going to discuss next year's school budget, so I don't see them as one and the same.
If I understood the presentation correctly.
Am I missing something?
That at any point in time, so the school division gets allocated funds based upon the budget, in this particular instance, if I understood correctly, we underspent that. If we weren't spending it on bonuses, we would have the opportunity to spend it on other things, perhaps, that were one-time funds, or we could even return it and ask the city to reappropriate as a whole. So even though it's designed, as I understand it, as coming out of this year's underutilized funds, they still go into the same pot that ultimately, as a school division, if we're saying that... ultimately, as a school division, if we're saying that these are the things that we want to accomplish, but we need this amount of resource to do it, those are resources. If we're saying that we have all the resources that we need already to accomplish the things that we want to achieve, that's a different story. My point is, I think we need to be able to hear what those needs are and where we are, so that whether it's this amount at 11 million, or we decide to do 40 million, or we decide to do zero, it still needs to be, in my opinion, tied to what is it that we're trying to achieve for our students and staff and community, and then use those resources in whatever way seems best appropriate. This is one recommendation, but it is a recommendation where the board has not yet had a presentation on the big picture.
No, I understand. I definitely agree with you on understanding the bigger picture and the values of the board and having that reflected in the budget. The one piece, though, is that from having this discussion before, and Mr. Jenkins, please correct me if I'm wrong, but once these were designated as personnel funds, were, is there, are we able to recategorize them, or is there a process for that? Because I thought once they were categorized there, that they were to be used on personnel.
These, the funds that we're speaking of are personnel funds, that is, they're budgeted for wages and benefits. Dr. Birdsong has the authority to make budget transfers between funds, between objects, that is, wages to, say, supplies, or between programs. So she has that authority. You certainly have that authority as well. Doctor, excuse me, Mr. Jordan, is correct that this is, if we didn't declare the, if we didn't use the funds for the bonus, there would be a larger surplus left at the end of the year for other uses. I don't, there's no argument there, but this was a very high priority, and that's why Dr. Birdsong had brought it to you.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. All right. We have Ms. Bassin. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So Mr. Jordan took, asked part of my question. I had the same thought that, you know, and as you know, I like to see the big picture. I am in support of bonuses, but what that bonus is and how we might divvy up that bonus to align with the student outcomes that we're trying to achieve, that is something I want to get a better understanding of. And for example, since we're talking about, you know, the underspent funds, you know, we have here 11 million, 11 million roughly, you know, to go towards these bonuses, but if I heard correctly, there's 20 million in underspent funds for personnel, correct?
That is, that's our projection, correct?
Right. So my question, I guess, you know, we have additional funds that could be used for something, and what that is, is something I would like to understand better. And as you know, every month, we receive our monthly financial report, where we often get, you know, those budget transfers that Mr. Jenkins mentioned. And I think that having a full understanding of the needs of our district is important, and we do have the capability to approve that, should we, through these discussions, find that there are other areas that we may want to support. Related to appreciation, this appreciation bonus, I think earlier I heard about the teacher forum. Have we polled our teachers what they would like to see, what would, what would increase their retention efforts? Do we have any sense of what they might like to see to, in this area?
Certainly. We've gotten feedback from teachers and building principals, and we also are very much aware of what's going on nationally, within the state, and within the school division. So it is not uncommon for school divisions, school boards to award or show appreciation for their staffs through bonuses, especially during times like this, whereby their vacancies nationwide across the board, and again, staff, teachers, and teacher assistants, and school nutrition workers, and building principals are having to do additional responsibilities because we are so short-staffed. And so, again, this bonus recommendation is around just that, showing our appreciation, because we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, this isn't the only thing that we've done to show our appreciation to our staff this year either, so I just want to make sure. I know we talk about things and one-offs, but, you know, we've, we've, we went back and revised the school calendar and added, you know, listened to their recommendations and added those, and then just last Friday, you know, taking away the vaccine testing mandate and, you know, to allow, you know, to alleviate some of the stresses that that was putting on the workforce. So, and that's just to name a couple, so just want to make sure that we all remember that this isn't just, it's not just money. It's not just money we're throwing at them, but it is, you know, going to, to show our, another way of showing our appreciation. Go ahead, Ms. Bassin. Did you have more to say?
Right, and I agree with that. We have to, and as we have been doing, continue to look at other ways that we can improve upon our climate and morale, and do all of those things. But I would like, you know, I would like to come back and have further discussion on this after we do review and discuss our budget. For me, that would give me a better sense of where we are and how we're meeting the needs of our students.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
I'll just say that putting the funds directly in the pockets of the individuals who are face-to-face with our children, in my mind, is the best use of the money. And I know that we're going to get a big picture with regards to the budget, but I believe that the more that we reward and recognize the incredibly hard work that they are doing, that is the best way, or one of the best ways, that we can show our appreciation.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
You know, we did this last year, when we end up having these discussions like it's, you know, are you forward-rewarding people, or are you not? There's nobody, I believe, sitting on this board or sitting at this table that doesn't want to see our employees rewarded for all the hard work that they do. What I'm really, what I'm talking about is the structural issues. So in a moment, when we get to the budget, like there was a note on, I think, the budget presentation about the salary report that we asked to be done. So we really need to get a handle on where our employees are structurally, in addition to what we want to provide as far as bonuses and appreciations are concerned. We have, we could have, and what the previous pay and comp study showed, that we did have seasoned employees who were not on a scale or a step that many would argue that they should be on. And at one time, we anticipated that it was going to take X amount of money in order to try to get that done. The bonuses are great. The bonuses treat everybody the same, and I'm fine with that in the sense of that bonus. But if we find that there are resource needs to help get our seasoned employees, and when I say mean seasoned, I mean those that have been with the division for a while, who stayed with the division, didn't leave the division to get on the right step, and then come back to the vision, those that have put in this effort to try to make sure that we reward those employees, I think is very, very important as well. And that's why I'm saying, let's get a good handle on where we are structurally, so then we can have an effective conversation about what we do in terms of bonuses that are good things and are very much deserved. But I think it's important that we get a handle on where we are structurally, and I think it's been a while since we've done that, and I hope we can do that before we just end up in this debate about who's deserving and who's not. Everybody's deserving.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I do have one question. I circled here. It's on the list of proposed employee bonuses, the list of the job descriptions. There's listed here five consultants. Can you explain what they're...
Is this on, is this on the letter?
It's on the list. So if they're consultants...
On the list.
There are consultants that are also contracted? Is that...
There are employees that have consultant in their titles. Let me see. Just look quickly.
They would definitely have to be full-time NPS employees.
Yes, they are definitely.
Couldn't be like Mr. Sturts or...
Right, that's what I was trying to...
Couldn't be, you know, you know.
I will assure you that this came out of the payroll system. Any title that's on here is a, is an employee title.
Full-time, contracted employee.
Yes. It's not at all out of the payroll system.
All right. Ms. Kimson?
Right now, we have a lot of our employees watching this meeting. That's why we're live-streamed. And if, as an employee, I had been looking at this on board docs since the weekend, and how excited I would be to see that the district was showing some appreciation for the hard work that I have been doing, along with all my fellow educators. And then I would, then they came on today and they listened to this discussion. I would be feeling all the happiness sliding away with each word of the discussion. If we're giving them a bonus that's clearly listed as a big thank you for what you had to go through this school year, as challenging it's been, if that's what we're saying the bonus is, and that was my impression, that it's a bonus for everyone who came together as a team, the Norfolk Public School team, to work so hard this year. And that's how I read it. When I looked at it Saturday, which is usually my day to try and get through it, and I thought, this is so great. And I was an employee here. I would have been thinking it was really great. And then we've sucked it dry. That's all I got to say. I would not be feeling the way I felt before I listened to this presentation, because if we're rewarding them for coming together as the Norfolk Public School team and doing the work they did with the challenges they had, then that's what we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to our next topic, the request for appropriation of unassigned fund balance and revenue sharing true-up for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Jenkins will also be presenting.
And Ms., Karen is going to pull that up.
Yeah, just need to change the presentation. Is this one here?
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is our carryover funds from fiscal '21. We're currently in fiscal '22, so this is from last year that we're talking about now. There are two issues that we have, and there's a lot of prose on two slides, and I'll sort of brief, quickly read through. But this is coming out of the city's revenue allocation policy. This was a policy that was approved by the council in 2018, which allows for revenue sharing and also the return of something called a reversion. So the first one I'm going to talk about is the revenue sharing or true-up provision. And the policy states if, at the end of a fiscal year, the actual local tax revenues differ from those that are budgeted, any excess revenue will be allocated in the same manner as similar revenues were allocated at the beginning of the year. So the school board may request the use of such funds, ask that they be appropriated for one-time expenditures. Similarly, if the revenues underperform, the shortage will be taken out as part of the year-end process. So that's, that deals with revenue sharing, and when I say revenue sharing, it's the city's local revenue. So what happened was, last year, the city collected more revenue than they had budgeted. A portion of that is allocated to the schools, and we'll get into the amounts. The other part of the fund balance is called the reversion. And it's called the reversion because, under the state's, under state statute, any funds that are remaining in a school board, a school budget revert to the funder. Typically, that's the city, it could be the state. But typically, if we don't spend funds that are appropriated to us, they return to the funder. The city's policy indicates that the board, you may request by resolution the reappropriation of reversion funds, including the balance of end-of-the-year funds and also revenue from the true-up formula. That's the thing I just spoke about. The school board resolution may request the use of the reversion funds for one-time purchases. Upon receipt of the resolution, the city's budget office will prepare an ordinance for the council's consideration. If the board does not make a request to appropriate the reversion funding, it'll be used in a subsequent fiscal year for the capital improvement plan to support the purchase of school buses. So this is the policy that the city council adopted. It is not a, it is not a revenue sharing agreement in that manner. It is a city policy. So, for last year, we had the reversion account, or unassigned fund balance, of $11,296, so 11.2 million. There were some other funds in the general fund, but they were for specific purposes and either carried over and were used to pay for encumbrances, purchase orders that were outstanding, or they had been reappropriated by your request. The other is the true-up, which was $8,138,185. This represents 29.55% of whatever the city's surplus was. So that's about a third. So the city's surplus was around 24 million. It's just quick math. Don't hold me to it. So the total carryover from last year, $19,338,381, so just over $19 million. These are the recommendations for the use of the reappropriated funds. The first item is Maury High School, either a rebuild or a renovation, $3 million. This is part of the, and you'll hear more later in the regular budget presentation, but our discussions with the city have indicated that they would like for the school board to contribute $3 million a year to a rebuilding program. So this would be the first installment. Roof replacements of just over $2.5 million, window and door replacements under, just under $2 million, the reprinting, or excuse me, repointing of bricks at PB Young, $1,191, and then a contingency at the superintendent's discretion of $2,556,196. This would largely take care of things that we have not foreseen, which could include cost overruns on projects. And then finally, the revenue sharing contingent, or revenue sharing surplus, we're recommending that that be held for the capital fund to address cost variances. We are seeing that our estimates, the estimates that we provided to you in the capital plan, when we go to design, we're finding that the estimates are higher. And in fact, some of the ones where we've received bids for or quotes for are more than we have budgeted. So we will need additional funds, and we're recommending the use of these funds that will remain in fiscal '21, either in the city's budget or our budget, that are available to the school board for the purposes noted here. Again, members of the board, that's what I have. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions? Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Mr. Jenkins, can you explain, again, the $3 million allocated for Maury High School rebuild or renovate?
I don't, I think that's not some, I'm not sure that there's been discussion about that before. Dr. Birdsong, there has. Actually, yes, we talked about it in November. Actually, yes, we talked about it in November. The school board, or excuse me, the city would, at least the city staff has indicated to us that they would like to progress with a rebuilding program, either renovation, major renovations or rebuilding. They were looking, I believe the number is around three, a little over 300 million over the first 10 years, which would include, I think that includes their deferred, let me back up, that includes their deferred maintenance. They were looking at an annual debt of $22 million a year, plus $3 million of school reversion to come up with 25 million a year. So over 10 years, the rebuild portion of the capital that they have been discussing with us would be 250 million. So the city plans to borrow $22 million a year, and they would like the school board to contribute $3 million annually of the reversion funds towards the rebuilding.
Okay, I, I do recall that discussion. But what is the timeline for the $3 million? And is it, is it direct, is it, is the request for it to come, which I believe it is, to come directly from our reversion fund, when does that end?
When does it end?
When, when do we stop paying the $3 million?
Initially, we're looking at a 10-year plan, but I think the city has really, they've talked to us about a 20-year plan, but they've not asked us for information specific beyond the first 10. So I think it's a 20-year that they're looking at in total. But at the, at this point, we've been focused on the first 10.
Okay.
Which, so that would be 30 million over 10 years.
So this is, this is a very difficult conversation because the whole concept of reversion funds, which I've shared this before, I don't really like calling it savings because I don't believe we're saving anything. It's because we cannot find the personnel that we have allocated funds for, that we have said that we needed, whether that's social workers or behavioral analysis or reading specialists or math specialists. And so these are positions that we are actively trying to recruit and fill every single day because we know that's what our children need. And, and I know that we have had some exceptionally high carryforward funds over the past few years because of the pandemic and, you know, a few other circumstances. But I wish that we would never even get into the position of having the carryforward funds. I wish that we, it would be so that every position that we allocated for was, you know, completely filled and that we, we were maybe at maybe 1 million, 2 million. But to make a pledge, that 3 million will come right off the top and go, you know, to the Maury rebuilding, which unfortunately, it is the responsibility of our locality to pay for the rebuilding of any of our schools. The state does not fund that. The federal government does not fund that. It is our local government. Do you, Dr. Bertsch, do you see this as something, you know, feasible for the next 10, maybe 20 years?
Well, when the plan was presented to us, and of course, we have had several meetings around this discussion, and we did bring this matter to the board previously, I believe it was in November. And so this isn't the first time you're hearing it. But I would say that based on, because we did go back and Mr. Jenkins and Ms. Cowell did look at the reversion funds for the past, how long, maybe?
I think.
20 years or so, and it's been an average of, well, yes. I wanted to say like 12, 10 to 12 million.
Okay.
Well, it's been over 3 million. In the last couple of years, it's been especially high, largely because of the pandemic and the, and the whole labor market.
Prior to the pandemic, we've had, well, this board knows, well, many people have served on the board for a long time. It's, it's just been for, for several years, decades, that we've had substantial carryover. And I think that's one of the reasons why they've asked us to include the three with the plan. And we, we saw that as very miniscule compared to how much it's going to cost to rebuild a lot of our schools. And so we, we thought that would be something that we could contribute based on the trend data around our carryover.
Okay.
I would say that.
Otherwise.
The pre-pandemic reversion amounts have been around double that, five to seven. Not nearly what they've been in the last couple of years.
Those are some of the numbers that I recall.
This 3 million is not, is not a small hurdle in many years.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Go ahead, Ms. Bastine, and then Ms. Kimson.
I guess, I, I, I'm trying to, and this is, this is one reason, just tying into my comments made in the previous, on the previous agenda item that we just discussed, why I think having this big-picture discussion is important. So a couple of things. The 3 million, I guess, I don't know, I, I just don't recall that conversation, and I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand the city and Norfolk Public Schools, you know, what that collaborative plan is and what that looks like. And I feel like, I, I guess I feel like there are missing pieces, at least for me, in my understanding, and it could just be me, and.
But Ken, and the board, we did review with the board in early November a plan that was larger than what our, our subsequent, the subsequent information from the city was. And in that, we did indicate that Maury replacement or renovation of Maury was, was the leading priority.
Well, that part, yes.
And there were three elementary schools, J Cox, Norview, I think Norview Elementary was the highest, J Cox, and then Granby Elementary.
Right, that, that, that was discussed.
That's in the 10-year plan.
Right, and, and that I get.
It's not, it hasn't been approved. It's some, it's just discussions we've had with city staff.
Okay, but I, I understand that Maury is top priority. We have had that discussion for a long time. That's not the piece. I guess the, the 3 million every year for 10 years, you know, that part is what I feel like I'm hearing for the first time.
And that is from the staff.
Yeah.
And they, they were to put up, they, they have said that they would put 22 million to be funded with debt they would borrow, and their ask was that we provide authority.
Okay.
I'm honestly not understanding because Maury alone was even, pre-pandemic was 150 million.
Oh, yeah, it was like 150, 150 million.
And we have a three-year plan to have it, you know, planning, building, and then filling, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting it either. So maybe.
So I guess I'm trying to understand what, what, how, how does, can you re, maybe I didn't hear you well. But can you please discuss again, 3 million over 10 years, when a school's gonna be built in three years and costs 150 million? I'm not understanding.
The first year, it's 3 million for the reversion, and those funds would be used towards the Maury project. Later this afternoon, we'll talk about the, the capital budget. This is the reversion piece that will supplement the capital budget, but we also have a capital plan with, that we would refer, review with you for, shouldn't say capital plan, a capital budget for the coming year. It includes a substantially larger amount of debt that would, so that we could fund the entire 150 million dollar project. That is their request. And so while they're talking about 22 million dollars of debt per year, we need a lot more than 22 million in the first year that when we do Maury. So it averages 22 million. I don't, I, I probably have mistakenly conveyed that we would, that they would borrow 22 million every year. The average over the 10 years would be 22 million, but this is severely front-loaded. The great, the Maury project alone is gonna require debt of about 130 million, 35. It's a much bigger number. Yes.
So to answer your question, we'll be asking the city for over 167 million for our capital budget for the '23 school year.
And I think 142 million of that is debt.
Right, right. So we'll be asking for that. It includes the debt. But within the plan, they've asked us to contribute three. So it would be three added to the 167 that we're, we're gonna be asking them.
Ms. Bastine, did you have anything else, or can I move on to Ms. Kimson?
Well, so, so the Maury piece, I think, is, I'm probably gonna need to have a one-on-one or something to, to have a better understanding. But my other question is around PB Young Elementary. At one point, PB Young on the FCI was top of the, top of the list. And I was just, if you could refresh my memory, or if the board, you know, someone on the board can refresh my memory, maybe in facilities, you've talked about it. But where, where are we, where is PB Young in the timeline of, you know, facility, with, facility, either renovation or, or as part of the redevelopment? Like, what is the plan for PB Young?
So in terms of, of the city, or are you talking about internal FCI?
Well, internal FCI, because like I said, it, it was at the top in poor, you know, one of our poorest-conditioned schools.
I don't recall that it was at the top, but Mr. Freyler, I hate to put you on the spot. I know we're not talking about this specifically this evening, but if you have that information.
I thought Laramore was at the top.
And I, and I do know that from our standpoint and, and meeting with our city colleagues, they don't plan, of course, Norfolk Public Schools, we will continue to maintain and ensure that building is safe for our children. But I, it wasn't a number-one school for replacement or renovation, so I'm not sure where that came from. And Rick, I don't mean to put you on the spot again. I didn't know we would be talking about FCI and PB Young tonight, but if you have it very quickly because we're tight for time.
It's 0.78 FCI.
Right.
And it is on, it's in your plan. I did not bring that with me because it'll look at us, you know, prepared. But it is in our plan. That's just one of the projects that are, that are currently scheduled. There's, there's more projects in subsequent years.
Right, and I appreciate, and I'm bringing that up in the context of the nearly 2 million, you know, that we're putting into the, the, you know, brickwork for that school.
Our kids are gonna be there. Our kids will.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What is the plan?
To make it be the best building we can have for our kids.
Well, I, I don't disagree. I'm not asking because I disagree with that. I absolutely agree, but I, I was just trying to get a sense of what the plan is for that, especially as we continue to talk about, you know, Tidewater Park and, you know, the, the changes that are occurring in that area. So that, that was the basis of my question.
The three elementary schools that I mentioned are in the first 10 years. So it would have, we, we must do repairs because we will be in that school for another, at least 10 years.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll, I'll defer to others.
Go ahead, Ms. Kimson.
This is just real quick, and I may have misunderstood, but it sounded like you said the agreement will include $3 million from the school system for 10 years. But then it sounded like you said, or maybe up to 20.
Now, 22 million would be money that would be borrowed that would come from the city. The city would borrow 22 million on average each year, which would give, the 22 million of debt each year plus a 3 million reversion is 25 million. Times 10 years is 250 million.
But in the end, is it 30 million, 3 million times 10 years, 30 million? Or is it 22 million times 10 years?
Well, over the 10 years, the reversion would be 30 million.
Right, that's what I thought, and then I was confused.
Plus 220 million of debt would be, would give us the 250.
But at the end of 10 years, we would be finished with the 3 million? A, a year, so that we could begin another set of school, schools to be built the next decade?
I'm sorry. Currently, the, the plans only go 10 years, or the discussion has gone, has ended in year 10. But they've also said to us that they really want this to continue for a much longer period.
Okay, so, so once these schools are built this decade, then continuing it, of course, it'd still take us forever to get all of our schools replaced, but.
That would be subject to discussion, I'm sure.
All right, but okay, that's what I did. I just didn't understand that piece of what, what you said, the another, up to 20 years, and I thought, we're not gonna wait 20 years to build these four schools?
No, this is what they would do over a 20-year period.
Thank you. That's all I needed. I was just confused. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I think the, the, the city council, we haven't had a joint meeting with city council in I don't know how long. The, the city council or the mayor is the president of the city council ought to send a letter to the school board with the, with the proposal so that the school board has an understanding of what the city's commitment is to the school board's needs. And from that, we should have that. We should have the information, the trend data and other things that are driving these recommendations so that the board can have a conversation, a data-informed conversation about what's being proposed, what it means, and how it impacts our strategic efforts in long-term health. This, if I can ask Mr. Jenkins a question, when you say you've met with city staff, who are you meeting with?
We met with the city manager and the city budget director.
Okay, so to your knowledge.
I think the, the finance director may have been in one meeting.
So to your knowledge, the, the council has authorized them to make this proposal?
Dr., I mean, Mr. Jordan, I have no idea.
Right, so, so what I'm saying is, we, we don't, we shouldn't put the superintendent in the position of having to bring recommendations to us like this based upon this governing board, not knowing what our funding partners and governing board for the city is actually saying that they're willing to do and commit to. And so I think that, that communication between the city council and the board needs to happen. And that communication between the governance team of the board, of the school system, and the council and the city manager needs, needs to happen because it's just, really is unfair to us to have our lead staff be in the position to have to recommend, to make recommendations to us based upon what city staff is saying without us knowing that it has the support and backing of the full council. And so, so I, I just think, again, we haven't even gotten to our proposed budget yet. And so I, I just think that right now, there's a lot of, we, we just need more transparency, more communication, more clarity, so that whatever it is that the city is willing to support, we know. And we can rejoice and build the schools that Ms. Kimson has been talking about, to her credit. And we know where and when and how and for whom and, and all the other things that, that go around it. This, get a presentation here and there and communication here and there and not having the full, big picture is just not fair to, to us as a board and is not fair to the city as a whole, in my opinion. And if we don't rise up and fulfill our obligations and responsibilities there, you know, shame on us for that. But I think we need to know, and also in this reappropriation, what's being mentioned is estimates. So I can't remember if it was here, if it was in the proposed budget, but there are some projects that we thought were gonna cost X. And now it's coming back, it's gonna cost 2X or X plus Y or something like that. And whether or not the estimates were off, or the cost of materials have gone up, or the supply chain, whatever it is that's impacting that, as a board, we need to have some sense of that. Otherwise, all these different estimates and things that we have in our facilities, master plan and so forth, all of that could just be shot out the water. So I also think it's important that we get more than just, well, we thought it was this and now it's that. We need to have an understanding of what's driving the, the delta so that, and perhaps on a more frequent basis, go back and revisit what decisions we were making based upon those estimates. what decisions we were making based upon those estimates in consideration of, you know, real-world realities that are happening today. So, I just think it's so much more below this that we need to make sure we're clear on, to Dr. Gabriel's credit, before we commit to something and we're not real clear on what it is that we're committing to. So, thank you.
Well, I want to say, I mean, we're going through a time of inflation. I mean, that's, it's a, you know, global inflation, and so, you know, I don't think we, I mean, you might want to hear it from our staff, but I can't, I'd be shocked if they said anything else, and also, you know, materials and so on and so forth. So, it's natural, and, I mean, in any project, major projects like this, the longer you wait, the prices, the prices increase. I mean, I think that's in sense. I can understand you wanting to get a specification from the administration on that. I do want to add, though, that we did get a timeline on when our priority schools that we had, that were recognized by our consultants as the top schools that needed to be addressed. We did get one on those. So, and we've had lots of discussion on that over the past year. We did direct Dr. Birdsong to, last July, to work with city manager, Dr. Chip Fowler, to come up with the funding source on it, and she has come back and presented information to us. And yes, granted, this one ties in with our, the reappropriation of funds, and this is just a piece of it, but I'm, you know, I agree, I would like to hear a larger presentation of just the funding piece, so that we can have a more comprehensive view of it. But I just, I just don't like this going back and forth of where we did direct Dr. Birdsong. She's done what we've asked her to, and then now go back and say, oh, well, now we need to work with the city council and the board on this. I think that there's definitely, communication and over-communicating at this point is important. But I just don't, I want to try to streamline this process as much as possible, so that, you know, we can, we can keep moving forward on this and not, you know, just not get muddied by, you know, just what can happen when you have too many councils speaking. I think that they've approved for Dr. Fowler to work with Dr. Birdsong. We approved Dr. Birdsong to work with Dr. Fowler. And I think that the delivery on some of the information could be sent to us in different ways to help us have a better understanding.
And I'm not disagreeing with any, I'm sorry, Ms. Campson, I'm not disagreeing with any of that. I'm just simply saying that, right now, there's a, Dr. Birdsong has done what we've asked her to do. What I'm saying, for the board, we have a responsibility. And so, in order for us to act on our responsibility, it's important that we understand. And so, just by the questions around this 10-year proposal, that, at least from my perspective, I think I'm hearing it for the first time, I just think, as a board, it's our responsibility to have a good understanding of these things, so that we can act on the work that Dr. Birdsong and her team did.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Birdsong, did you have something to add?
No, thank you.
Mr. Clanton, go ahead, and then Ms. Campson.
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, and, yeah, my apologies for the delay. Don't use this here. So, my level of comprehension regarding this is different. I follow it pretty well, so I don't necessarily, when we say "the board," I comprehend. Going back to what Dr. Martin was stated, in July, this board directed the superintendent to carry out a conversation, working with Dr. Chip Fowler, who is the city manager, as well as the mayor, if I'm not mistaken, also sent a letter stating who the two members of council would be, who would represent on this construction discussion. So, we have an official representation that the mayor has already sent over, and that was Courtney Doyle and Mr. Smigal, to continue this conversation. So, the first level of conversation goes out in July, and the administration comes back to us in November, and I'm looking right here at the 10-year, because originally, we were looking at a five-year, if I'm not mistaken. Then city, then, in the discussions, as a result of those discussions, came back to say we were looking at now a 10-year. And that came back to us in November, in the work session, and on Slide 11. From that, it mentions at least $3 million annually from the reversion accounts. So, it was presented to the board. We got their information, it's sitting here, at least $3 million. And I'm also reading in here, if I'm not mistaken, about the three years, what the typical plan it takes. So, first year is planning, two to three year, year two or three is about the construction, and then year three is when we're starting to put actual items into the building and so forth. So, I look at that $3 million, it's a part of that planning, that we need to go there. But our superintendent is doing exactly what this board, the will of the board, has directed. Whether or not individuals have supported it or not, we've given a clear direction for them to do this. So, we're coming back now, and I understand, we look at some of these numbers, these numbers may be a little bit different, but we've been given a whole plan about HVAC, and it's been said to us time and time again about the current CIP, in millions of dollars. If you go back to November work session, it's there. And then we got a year-by-year amount of account of which schools, where those dollars were going, including, I think you can probably find, yeah, there's a listing in here about PB Young, in all of our schools, and what they're going to receive. If you want to have additional discussion about it, we can have, say we're going to have additional discussion about it. But to say that the planning is not going in place for us to get to where we are, I don't think that's a fair assessment. We have a plan that's in front of us, so that we can move. And I think that, when the board took action back in July, it was, we need to move, to do some things, that there was a short window period of time for us to take action with the merit of different dollars that are going there. I'm happy to hear that, through the conversation that's taken place with the city manager and the superintendent and team, that there's a long-range plan. We all know that grossly, for a number of years, we did not have the adequate number of dollars for capital improvement to improve our school buildings. We heard that, I was at the Lindenwood School last week, and people were saying, well, why didn't it happen to the school? And I think somebody had said, you know, it takes $3 million just to replace a roof on some buildings. We're finally starting to get, last year was the first time that we got a large amount of dollars to support capital improvement. And so, it's good to see that we have a plan, a plan that we can definitely talk about, but to say that it's not in big picture, when every month, July, come back to November, and now we're here in March. To say that we don't, and we haven't been looking at this, isn't a fair assessment. I can comprehend, I can read, the information's been given to us, and I can break it down. And so, I'm happy in the respect that we're getting something in front of us here that we can speak about, that we can get around, and that, most importantly, I think for me, I just want to know when we're going to start the first construction, on the first building, so that we can communicate that out there. We know that we've identified those particular buildings that are going to get done. I think also, in some of that planning, what also has to be elaborated is that, with some of the space that we're looking at, whether it's a Madison, or Easton, whatever, you know, it's also been a gentleman's agreement from this school board and the city, that when we sell, or when the city sells that land, that the revenue from that, the sale of that land, comes back to support school construction. And I think that that needs to be, you know, maybe codified and put in a letter and so forth, so that we can hear. But I do not disagree in the respect that we have to continue the conversation. We can request, but we are not the individuals who authorize, and we have no authority to authorize debt. And I believe that, through the conversations with the superintendent and her team, and Rick, and being able to put all of that information together, that they see the big picture. Because there was a time when I heard, the city council wasn't going to give us money, or they were going to look at doing some other things. But I think that there's a working relationship now that will allow us to continue to move forward. And I encourage my colleagues, if you can go back to November from the work session, and the presentation's in there, and it does mention, again, I said Slide 11, where they mentioned at least $3 million annually from reversion accounts that we would be able to use. But I'm happy to see that buildings are going to be safer. We're going to have HVAC, we're going to be able to put some windows, doors, to expand the longevity, because we all know that the average age of our buildings here is at least 50 years old. And we have to do what we can to make sure that we create a safe learning environment for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Ms. Campson, go ahead, and then we're going to discontinue this conversation in light of the time.
And actually, this will be short, because Mr. Clanton covered a number of the things that I was going to say. But we need to have our goal here focused on the fact that we need to build safe 21st-century schools for our children. That's where our focus should be. All this other little discussion, we find to discuss and talk about it, but what's our focus? And my focus is, before the end of this decade, that we're putting our children in four fabulous 21st-century schools, because they deserve it. They deserve to have the same level of schools they have in Chesapeake and in Virginia Beach, where they're continually building and their schools. And that's what we need to be focused on. We can get information along the way, and that's great, but it, we shouldn't have so much discussion that it delays what our goal is, which is new 21st-century schools for our children. They, our children deserve those kind of schools, just like they have anywhere else. And so, that's just what I want to keep saying. Sorry you're going to hear me saying it a lot, but that's what the goal is. Let's build these schools, and this four is just a drop in the bucket, because we have all these baby boomer schools from the early '50s through the mid-'60s. That's 60, 70 years old. Let's build some new schools for the kids, not get tied up with a lot of details. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Campson. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget. There are 51 slides on this presentation, and I'm going to do a cold stop at 6:30 to start the public hearing, so if we have to come back to it after the public hearing, we can recess for that.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Could I ask a question? Is there a budget book to go along with this?
There is, but I didn't receive a budget book. I just received it was online.
Do you have them? Okay, thank you.
It's like Santa Claus is in town.
Yay, budget season.
Here come all them books.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ooh, nice pictures.
Mr. Jenkins, did you want to go ahead? Yeah, please start.
Well, good afternoon, one more time. At this point, we're going to start with the superintendent's proposed budget. And as you said, Dr. Martin, we have a public hearing, so we'll take a break at that point. But this is Dr. Birdsong's recommendation to you for the operating budget, the issues we talked about before, reversion, much of that was capital. The operating budget will include a number of things, including a capital allowance, grants and so forth. But in the interest of time, I will go ahead and get started. The topics that we will discuss tonight, or we will bring up, first, the budget is built on your goals and your priorities, so there's, you will see those. We'll describe very briefly the budget process. There's a recap of the fiscal '22 budget, just kind of, this is where we started, this is where we are today. We'll look at student enrollment trends and projections. Then, Dr. Birdsong, will talk to you specifically about the proposals that are included in the budget for the coming year, or the priorities that built, that we used to develop the budget, and then the specifics. And then we'll end with next steps, things that happened after today. So, as you're aware, our goals are to improve student academic achievement and outcomes, to ensure that we have safe and caring and healthy learning environments for our students, and that we strengthen family and community engagement. These are actually taken directly from your current accountability plan, which I understand we are amending, but this is the current plan. The priorities in that plan are to increase the percentage of schools that are fully accredited. We'd like all of them to be fully accredited by fiscal '24. We'll increase the percentage of VDOE, continuous improvement schools, and NPS, high academic performing schools. All subgroups, the subgroup achievement gap will be decreased, and the on-time graduation rate will increase to 85%. We'll provide educational equity, options and opportunities. And we will attract and retain a highly qualified and effective staff. And our goal being fully staffed, or the definition of that is fully staffed at the beginning of the year. Other specific priorities include expanding the educational planning and create a five-year capital improvement plan for facilities and technology, and that is something we've actually done, and we just spoke about. Promote a culture of safety, high attendance rates, decrease dropout rates, provide positive organizational culture, and promote student improvements and student behavior. Attain and, excuse me, attract and retain community partnerships and strengthen family engagements. And then strive to improve relationships, increase governance capacity. Now, quickly, the budget process, it's, this process is something we've used for a number of years, probably a long time, decades. We start with assessing what's needed. We send out information to each department, asking them to identify what it is you're planning to do next year, and what funds are you needing in order to do that. In November, those plans, or those requests, or budget requests, come into the budget office. And at that point, they, we started analyzing. In December, the governor introduced a biennial budget for fiscal '22, well, two fiscal years, '22 to '24. You held a public hearing on December 15th to get community input, and the staff has met with department heads to review their requests, to understand what is it that you're asking for, what are we trying to obtain, what is our goal? In the January, February timeframe, or basically the last two months, that's where the sausage-making is. The executive leadership team and the superintendent reviewed and discussed the needs of the school division, and how the division and departmental-level operating plans needed to be developed to best support such needs. Decisions were then made regarding the recommendations that we're making to you tonight. Going forward, today's March 2nd. We're here presenting the budget to you. In two weeks, March 16th, we are asking that you would approve the proposed superintendent's budget. You may approve it just as it is, you may offer amendments. April 1st is our deadline to get your budget to city council. We will actually send it to the manager, who then folds it into the request that goes for council consideration. During the month of May, the council will appropriate the funds to the school board. They will also hold a public hearing. The school board, following that, would have to address any differences. The differences, I think, will be fairly small. They generally will be based on changes in the state's budget, I believe, because we're using the state's, or, excuse me, the city's revenue allocation policy. And of course, if there are differences, you would adjust them, and then you would adopt a final fiscal '23 budget. This is a snapshot of the fiscal '22, that's this year, so it's not next year, this is this year's budget. Our general fund budget is $354.9 million. Our school nutrition program budget is $22 million. We have grants and special programs of $34.8 million. We have funds under the coronavirus programs from the federal government, and this is the original budget that has not, that doesn't include amendments. That's $55.4 million. Last week, city council increased that amount by $118 million because of the ARPA funds that you requested appropriation for several months ago. And then finally, there's a capital improvement budget, which includes deferred maintenance and bus replacements, combining $27.7 million. So, the current budget, fiscal '22, is $494.8 million. We have here student enrollment that goes back to 2011. We can see that over the last several years, well, what's on this graph, that our enrollment has been declining. The red line is the September 30th membership. The red line is the September 30th membership. The blue line is the average membership from the beginning of the year, the beginning of each year until March 31st. Between 2011 and 2020, there was a decline of 3,357 students. And this is an average daily membership. In the last three years, we're projecting the decline would be 2,031. So over the last, from 2011 to our projection in '23, there's a reduction of over 5,300 students. So that's our trend. Now, for fiscal '23, this is a graph of next year. The funding that's available are based on the governor's budget proposals, and that's subject to change. The general assembly is still in session. And I don't believe there's a, I don't believe they finalized the state budget at this point. But based on the governor's proposal, our budget, the source of funds from this state, they would provide $228.5 million, that's 60%, well over 60% of our budget. The revenue allocation policy from the city would provide $138.9 million, just under 37% of our budget, and a fairly small amount from federal and other local sources. So our general fund budget going into fiscal '22 is $376.7 million. Dr. Bertsong, with that, I believe it's yours. Thank you.
Madam Chair Barton, Vice Chairman Clanton, members of the school board and members of our community, good evening. My team and I appreciate this opportunity to present the FY '22, '23 operating budget for your consideration. After all, adopting a budget for next year will be one of the most important decisions that you will make this school year. Indeed, a budget is the oil in the machine that drives the progress of any organization. A school division's budget must be practical, yet there is also an imperative that it be visionary. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. I will say unequivocally that this philosophy is at the heart of what I will be recommending to you this evening. I believe you will find this proposal is one designed to not only uplift children in the here and now, but to prepare them for a brighter future. My leadership team and I have spent a great deal of time aligning this request with the tenets of our Drive for Five, which as you know, is the framework we use to fuel our march towards equity and excellence for all. And certainly, this proposal aligns with the school board's goals and priorities. To put it simply, we worked to lay the absolute best foundation we could for the 28,000-plus children whom we serve. Also important and what this recommendation will provide for us is our exceptional staff. We are recommending investments of human resources that recognizes our staff values, their needs and their aspirations. Yes, our employees are the key to the delivery of meaningful and transformative public education services. Okay, six priorities guided the decisions of our leadership team toward the budget development process. These priorities are competitive compensation, employee recruitment and retention, additional resources for schools and students, technology, infrastructure and instructional supports, safety and security, and building, maintenance and repairs. You will note, the additional resources priority area is a very layered one. And that's because our commitment to reach each and every child, we are deeply committed to that. As you know, we deeply care for our children, no matter what age, where they stand academically, or how they are faring socially and emotionally. And I will now begin moving through our recommendations, category by category, starting with compensation. I would certainly appreciate you giving me the opportunity to complete this entire presentation before asking questions. Many of your questions may be answered during some point of this presentation, so I thank you kindly for this consideration. Next slide, please. We in leadership are acutely aware of the importance of providing competitive compensation. It is the priority, it is the primary way to remain successful in an employment marketplace where the press to hire top-notch talent is tantamount to a high-stakes race. We have worked diligently to develop a proposal that deserves to be described by the adjective competitive. Before I begin addressing our recommendations in this priority area, I need to qualify that the average salary increases I will share are just that. They are averages. The percentage of actual individual salary increases will be determined by where employees fall on their salary scales. Our first recommendation is to increase the starting pay for our teachers from $47,200 to $49,500. This action will help ensure NPS is competitive in the employment marketplace. We are also recommending a pay raise and a step increase for teachers, which will essentially average to 5.8%. As I have shared time and time again, our teachers are the backbone of our school division. For our classified staff, we intend to increase the hourly starting rate from $11 to $12. This will address an increase in the state minimum wage requirement that will go into effect January 1, 2023. We also plan to provide a raise and a stepping increase for classified employees, which will average to 7.5%. It is so gratifying that we are able to provide our classified employees with such a significant increase. As the compensation for many who serve in classified roles, it's not as high as in some of our other areas. For administrators, we will recommend a pay raise and a step increase that will average 4.2%. We continue to appreciate our hard-working administrators and certainly want to provide to them a significant salary increase. And finally, this proposal contains funding for Phase One as a four-year plan that begins to address salary compression resulting from decisions not to provide step increases for employees during previous years and certainly not during this administration. We need to address these years of non-step movement for obvious equity reasons, and I think Mr. Jordan pointed that out today. As you know, when employees are frozen on a step, compression results, which leads to minimal pay, minimal pay differences between employees with considerable experience and those in the early stages of their careers. Next slide, please. Norfolk Public Schools has long provided a robust health insurance program, and we will continue to do so. The difficult news is that our premiums will be rising 6% effective December 2022. However, we are working to mitigate the negative effect by having the school division to share half the cost of this increase. Also, please take note that our efforts to raise salaries are not just confined to full-time employees. Part-time teachers and classified employees will benefit from this proposal. The hourly summer school rate will increase from $35 to $40 an hour for our teachers. And part-time classified employees will also see their hourly rate rise to $12 an hour to proactively meet the minimum wage requirement. I have shared with the board repeatedly about the intense pressure the pandemic has put on our teachers, our administrators and other staff. We must continue to reward our teachers for their flexibility in the classroom. To do so, we intend to continue to compensate teachers with a stipend when they are assigned a full teaching load and agree to take on additional virtual classes. Next slide, please. Still in the area of compensation, the first entry on this slide is the result of a recommendation from the communications audit that was conducted in FY '20. Many wonderful activities, programs and events take place in our school division. Unfortunately, we have been absent a formal system to mine the good news emanating from them. This recommendation will provide a stipend for a staff member from each school to work with our communications and community engagement staff to promote school-level accomplishments. As you know, many of our instructional and classified staff take on athletic duties at the high school and middle school levels. We will increase those stipends to better acknowledge the time and effort involved and our need to stay competitive with neighboring school divisions. To ensure that the needs of our students with disabilities are taken care of while they're being transported to and from school, we are proposing to add 15 bus assistance that will help bus drivers to get our children safely to and from school. Next slide, please. Now let's move on to our second priority, employee recruitment and retention. According to data from the Virginia Department of Education, the number of unfilled teaching positions across Virginia spiked nearly 62% from school year 2019 to school year 2021. From 877 teacher vacancies, that was 877 teacher vacancies, to 1,420. And in August of 2021, which represents the beginning of this school year, the state school divisions reported nearly 5,000 cumulative educator vacancies. If I may use a metaphor here, it is the data, or it's data like this, that indicate that when it comes to hiring teachers, we are not fishing in a sea, we are fishing in a pond. And continuing with this metaphor, the school of qualified teachers is significantly shrinking, and we all know that. And this means we must be inventive about how we approach recruitment and retention. As such, some of the new strategies include providing a signing bonus for our new teacher hires, a bonus for new teachers who moved from classified positions within NPS into our classrooms, a bonus for new teachers who completed their student teaching with us and agreed to sign a contract with us, a welcome-back bonus for teachers who worked with us before but then experienced a separation period of one or more years, and finally, a relocation bonus for teachers moving to the Hampton Roads region from elsewhere in the state or in the country. Realizing that our employees have many networks and connections that could help us, we are offering them a bonus for referring teacher candidates who are ultimately hired into full-time positions. This bonus will be made available to non-administrative, full-time contracted employees only. We also intend to provide a stipend for teachers who accept a student-teacher placement. Again, we hope those teachers or those student teachers will find Norfolk Public Schools an attractive career option upon completing their teaching credentials. Did you hear that, Dr. Rousen? Next slide. Hint, hint. As the school board is well aware, there's a national shortage of school bus drivers. And Hampton Roads school divisions have become well acquainted with that fact of life. We are quite frankly, competing rather aggressively with one another to recruit and retain qualified drivers. With the following recommendations, we hope that these incentives will give us the extra edge. An increase in the hourly starting pay for our bus drivers from $15.30 to $17.80. Recruitment incentive pay for bus drivers who come onboard with NPS. And incentive pay for bus drivers for additional cleaning and sanitizing of school buses, which has become so necessary, as you know, during the pandemic. In addition to our focus on recruiting and retaining bus drivers, we would like to provide incentive pay for our hard-working custodians who maintain our facilities and our school nutrition workers who, on a daily basis, prepare healthy and delicious meals for our students. As such, we are proposing incentive pay for custodians for additional cleaning and sanitizing of our schools and facilities. And also, no one can deny that the pandemic has increased the workload of our school nutrition staff. And for those who take on additional duties, we are recommending incentive pay. Next slide, please. And now we're moving on to priority three. You will find this priority area the most extensive part of this presentation. It is quite lengthy, but that speaks to the vast nature of what we are recommending. I trust you will see that we have worked diligently to uplift our children wherever they fall on the learning spectrum. As you look closely at this slide, you will see the evidence of just that. Planned additions include five gifted resource teachers to help improve our delivery of gifted education services, which was a recommendation coming out of the gifted education audit facilitated by William &amp; Mary. Five English learner teachers to address the increase in our English learner student enrollment. During the fall of the 2021 school year, the total enrollment of our English learners was 877. This school year, that rose to 1,375. We are also recommending the hiring of two new career and technical education teachers. These additions will enable us to be able to expand pathway offerings at the high school level. This recommendation also includes contract adjustments for 10 graduation coaches, moving them from 10-month contracts to 11-month contracts. This will help them be even more proactive as they will be able to work during the summer to identify students who need that additional support. Next slide, please. As you recall, we've been able to offer recess at elementary schools and some other wellness initiatives because we increase support in these areas by providing additional health and physical education assistance in the '22 budget. However, those positions were underwritten by CARES funding for the short term. And this budget proposal involves moving funding to those positions into the operating budget, so they become permanent ones. And throughout this school year, the administration has shared pertinent data, student achievement data with the board. And as you know, we are trending in the right direction. However, without a doubt, we need more support for students to facilitate learning recovery. We believe the next four recommendations will make a significant difference in that regard. They include the continuation and expansion of extended school day tutoring programs and the expansion of our summer basic skills and innovation programs. This past summer, it marked a record year for student enrollment as parents demonstrated their desire for additional academic support to ready their children for this school year. All total, 7,670 students, or nearly 27% of our total student enrollment, took advantage of our summer offerings, and we were so very pleased with that. Students at the middle school level have experienced some of the largest performance declines on various assessments, as you know. And therefore, we would like to provide additional support for them in the areas of mathematics and reading. As such, we intend to provide mathematics and English tutors for our middle school students during their support blocks. Some of our local school divisions, as you know, they operate on a four-by-four block schedule, that is their high schools, which means basically the courses are offered in a condensed semester format versus the standard block, which operates on a year-long basis. While in Norfolk Public Schools, we believe our modified A-B block schedule approach helps students enjoy more in-depth educational experiences in the various content areas, we also recognize we need to approach credit recovery in a different way that is more assertive. This recommendation includes funding for extensive tutoring support to help students recover the credits that they need. Next slide, please. Moving on, other strategies encompassed in our spending plan include the purchase of materials for classroom libraries, mathematics manipulatives, because feedback from our teachers indicates that these hands-on tools advance greater understanding of math concepts and more curriculum materials to help better reach our English learner students. Literacy is the linchpin for student success. We all know that. Teaching children to read in a remote learning environment was difficult at best. Now that our children are back in school, it will come to no surprise to the board that there's a concerted effort on helping our younger students acquire age-appropriate literacy skills. We intend to purchase materials that teachers can use to engage and encourage them. Also, we all know the middle year- Also, we all know the middle years, and I think Dr. Ralphson has talked about this a lot, are critical as children prepare for their transition to high school. If our middle school students do not have the literacy skills that they need to be successful, then they are at high risk of dropping out of school, and we certainly do not want that. We know that having highly effective teachers in our classrooms is the most single effective strategy that we can employ. Therefore, we would like to partner with a local university to offer reading courses for middle school teachers so Norfolk Public Schools can take reading instruction to even a higher level. Please note that we have taken great care to align our purchases of materials and software to meet identified student needs. As you know, our schools employ a response-to-intervention approach, which Ms. Campson helped when she was on the administration, which means we recognize children enter the learning environment with different skill sets. We know that, and we develop our interventions to meet students' individual needs or individual needs. For our students who are identified as needing Tier III supports, an additional layer of intensive intervention is needed to address those needs. This tier represents the smallest percentage of our students. However, they are the students who experience the most significant academic challenges and therefore are at risk of developing even more severe academic issues. So at the Tier III level, the goal is acceleration of learning, to lift students to where they need to be so that they are successful in our classrooms. And the software we will purchase will address students at all levels, including an intense focus on students identified as in the Tier III level, who need Tier III support. Next slide. And moving right along, Norfolk Public Schools is committed to meeting the needs of our English learners, which is a growing population within our school division. Therefore, this budget will underwrite academic and social-emotional learning supports, such as transition packages that include school supplies as well as parent notebooks. Additional support for our English learners that this budget proposal identifies, it will support family engagement initiatives such as family academies, health fairs, and vaccination clinics, and additional curricular materials, including specialized software and reading materials, and of course, that's just to name a few supports. Two employment areas of high needs for, or of high need for Norfolk Public Schools are gifted resource teachers and media specialists. Therefore, we intend to set aside funding for to grow our own programs for these instructional staff. We believe these efforts, which will provide access to necessary training, will result in effective pipelines for hiring. And for a brief moment, I want you to reflect on this question, board members, please. Have you ever been in a great school that did not have a great leader? Let me pose that question again. Have you ever been in a great school that did not have a great leader? Okay, my guess is that you have not. So it stands to reason that we would expand our division-level, grow our own system, which is designed to encourage effective school and division-level leadership. And finally, we plan to call on the expertise of highly effective current principals, and I see some in the audience, and retired principals, in the area of mentoring new principals on a one-to-one basis. Such mentoring can also be made available to other principals who just need some extra support in areas where their mentor principals have excelled. Next slide, please. I just touched on our pipeline strategies, but please know that we also have extensive plans for the professional development of our current school leaders and teachers. For example, we're setting aside funds to strengthen and develop the on-the-job expertise of our building-level leaders. These opportunities can include such initiatives as best practices in discipline and improving culture and climate, which I kept here this evening, for students and staff. This is just to name a couple of examples. In the area of professional development for teachers, we have tremendous plans to further PBIS training and harnessing technology to encourage student engagement. We also intend to offer extended-day opportunities for identified gifted students with a particular focus on the arts and sciences. Focus group feedback during Norfolk Public Schools' gifted local plan revision process, it indicated that there was a need for students to be able to explore interests beyond academics. And this funding will cover such things as teachers' part-time pay, course materials, transportation costs for field trips, registration fees for special events, and costs for guest speakers, and that's just to name a few. We do have a pool of funding set aside so we can engage our staff in creating additional formative and summative local assessments and for accomplishing needed curriculum updates. As you know, standards and best practices, they continue to evolve, and we want to make sure our kids are exposed to updated curricula. And as you're aware, it's critical that we align our instruction and assessments with the written curriculum. Funds in this budget will help us complete an audit of social studies and science in those two content areas. And as you're aware, this year, we are having our reading and mathematics curricula updated or audited, and we'll have those results to the board hopefully by the end of the school year. Next slide, please. I noted earlier in this presentation that advancing the social-emotional well-being of students would be paramount. On this slide, you will see some of our key strategies in that regard. These personnel additions will not only uplift our children, will go a long way towards supporting current staff and fostering improved school climates. The five additional behavioral specialists will provide intervention supports, especially for schools experiencing high incidence of student disciplinary incidents. Meeting the diverse social-emotional needs of our student athletes, as you know, that's also critical for our student success. We're proposing to hire a teacher specialist who can work with our division and school-level athletic staff to build upon our social-emotional and health mitigation outreaches. Our intent is also to recruit five additional school social workers who will not only work with our students but also work with our families. We need a more effective home-to-school partnership so necessary interventions, support, and assistance can be provided when needed. To support an integrated approach with our teams of social workers, we recommend moving a social worker administrator's contract from ten months to twelve months to improve planning and oversight for this very important work. We are also recommending that the contract, that there be a contract adjustment of two school nurse administrators from ten to twelve months. The demands that come with school health mitigation strategies and other critical student health-related responsibilities speak volumes, I mean volumes, about this need. Next slide, please. Continuing on the theme of social-emotional well-being and health, we are also recommending the following, and this is critical for our success. Five additional school psychologists to help address the increase in the number of children who require more intense social-emotional and behavioral support. Some watching this presentation tonight may wonder why we're adding psychologists when we have just recommended hiring additional social workers. So let me be clear that while there is a crossover, there's crossover and alignment between the two positions, they are not interchangeable. Both psychologists and social workers are trained professionals in human behavior, emotions, and mental health. Social workers differ from psychologists by focusing more heavily on helping individuals comfortably interact in the school setting as well as home communities. Psychologists differ from school social workers in that they're trained to administer psychological testing if that's necessary. Psychologists and social workers are both qualified, as you know, to provide counseling services, and so our psychologists and social workers work together to identify students who are experiencing a variety of challenges and create strategies to help them manage issues such as anger, stress, anxiety, and to foster self-esteem and optimism. This is so very important. Strategies may include activities such as individual and group counseling, special instruction, and role model mentoring, for example. And to help effectively manage our team of school psychologists, we recommend moving one administrator's contract from ten to twelve months. And we also are committed to developing a pipeline for recruitment of these professionals by continuing our psychologist internship program, and we were successful this year with recruiting, I believe it was four, from that program, so we'd like to continue that. In the area of student wellness, we seek to provide appropriate administrative assistance to this area. The Department of Student Wellness is a fairly new department, as you know, within the school division and currently operates without full-time administrative support. And due to the exceptional efforts of the leadership and staff of this department, MPS was able to successfully navigate through the pandemic and keep the health, safety, and well-being of students and staff a number-one priority. Considering the critical importance of the work of this department, we need to ensure that they have the administrative support in place to assist with the day-to-day operations. And Dr. Martin, for the sake of time, I would respectfully request that I continue with this presentation. I see that we have community here, we're scheduled to start our public hearing at 6:30, so we can certainly come back to this, and we'll start with the next slide, which is Slide 25.
Thank you very much, Dr. Birdsong.
You're welcome.
We can go ahead and take a three-minute recess if anyone needs that time and let them get set up for the public hearing. And get started with our presentation. I'd like to welcome to the podium our consultant, Mr. David Sturts. He's with Cooperative Strategies. Norfolk Public Schools has been working with cooperative strategies for at least the past four to five years, longer than that?
Tick longer, 2012.
How much longer? It predates me. But on our facilities' needs and recommendations for capital improvements, and so, for the sake of time, I'd like you to go ahead and get started. There will be no questions after this, this is just an informational presentation, and then we'll move on to listen to your comments. So go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong, members of the community. It is an honor to be with you this evening. It's an honor to be with you and the community last week in Lindenwood to roll out some of this information here. Much of it is similar to what was seen last week and what you all saw previous. So I will be brief on the presentation, and before I do, I do want to apologize in advance that I have to scoot out this evening a little early for a family emergency this evening, but please, no disrespect, but I do need to do that unfortunately. So, in setting this up, before I get into the presentation, the why, what are we doing? I see it is a primary role of somebody in my position and somebody in all of our positions around this table to do our utmost to find ways to concentrate resources for our kids' education insofar as we have the power to do so, while making sure at the same time that all students have an accessible, high-quality school for them in every neighborhood around our division. That that is a conviction, and it is my professional opinion that this plan moves us forward in that direction, given this reality, that since I started working back in about 2012, walking your schools, the enrollment has declined about five thousand students, the capacity is the same, that we have less revenue to do with the same capacity, we are spread thin, and that the highest concentration of that resource challenge, that decline, is in the areas that we are concentrating the recommendations to concentrate our resources. It is about providing the best educational environment for our kids, that right now, when we look at the areas that I'll describe here in a minute, we have the highest underutilization, we have undersized schools, we have high leave rates of parents opting out. Something has to give, we have to change how the portfolio is structured so that we can invest as much as we can in the students that we have while having accessible schools. So I'm going to go back and say, how did we get to this point? As you know, many of you, that we started a facilities master plan process with community engagement, a steering committee, and community back in the fall of 2019, winter of 2020. When we started this process, we had a steering committee, we met on the 25th. Prior to that 25th meeting, we worked with the division leadership to come up with some ideas, some options. How could we concentrate our resources across the division for all kids K-12, given our age of portfolio, declining enrollment that has continued for 20 years and is projected to continue? How do we address that meaningfully? We went to the community with some of those ideas on March the 10th as the virus was starting to hit. We had to close down after that and go to virtual meetings at the end of March and into April, and then given the acute needs of the division to focus on the coronavirus and its implications for kids, there was a pause in the process to allow that focus. We then resumed almost to the date a year later, in March of 2021, with a steering committee again to review survey results from the last community meeting, to then have virtual community meetings in April 13th and 15th to work with the division following that, those virtual engagements, to take the different ideas and to come up with what is the next five years' worth of recommendations, the highest needs, and those initial recommendations. We went to the committee again on May the 10th to the board to present on June the 2nd, and then again in July. These are the key portfolio-level recommendations for the division. One, on rebuilds, as you saw earlier, Maury rebuilt, this is in 2019, the estimate of one hundred and twenty-eight to one hundred and fifty million, prices are going up. And up to three elementary schools, these are the oldest schools in the division that have not had a significant remodel, so we are using data to find the inequities and then to plan accordingly. So that is what is being discussed with the city. On the consolidations, this is to address poor condition, chronically declining enrollment, area redevelopment, and strengthened programs. Tidewater Park, anticipated redevelopment by the city in 2023, the timing, the recommendation to consolidate that school in 2023 as well. The Madison Secondary Alternative Program is in a condition, a facility that years ago was determined to be in such poor condition, you didn't even need to assess it. It's time beyond time to move kids into a better-quality facility. Easton Preschool, to consolidate that preschool program into the repurposed Fair Lawn as an area pre-K center to strengthen pre-K, because we all know the value of pre-K, we know the value of it short-term, we know the value of it long-term, the data bears that out, you have the surplus capacity, let's use it. Lindenwood, the demolition of the annex not too long ago, which was in such poor condition it needed to be demolished, renders the capacity of the building under 300, which by any metric anywhere is too small structurally to support a comprehensive elementary school program. Anywhere you look across the nation, 350 is that floor of a capacity to have the nurse, the psychologist, the art, the music, the PE, the resources, the special education services, all of those things that 60 years ago, when the school was designed, were not conceived of and needed for in an enrollment, but today are. And it is one of the few schools that just the capacity itself is structurally undersized. And it's surrounded in the area with the most underutilization or most surplus, and when we think underutilization, that is under-resourced. We are not able to resource the kids how the school is designed because it's half-full or thereabouts. That's what underutilization does day-to-day. It is under resourcing. So, when we look at the plan, no changes to the recommended rebuilds. When we look at the consolidation plan- When we look at the consolidation plan, only slight modification in addition. Monroe, in that area, Taylor, Monroe, and Lindenwood, in the most underutilized area for elementary schools with the highest choicing out rates in the division by far. To better utilize Monroe, which is less than half-full, put in two new pre-K 3s and three new pre-K 4 classes. Let's add up pre-K in that space. So that is new. No modification to the Tidewater Park, closed in the summer of 2023 to correlate with area redevelopment. Move into Ruffner as a 3-8 special program with dedicated choice seats. I'll have a slide on that momentarily with more details about that program idea and the benefits therein. Partial modification to Madison, looking to move that into Lindenwood. I'll explain that here in a little bit as an option for you, a recommendation rather. Modification, no modification to Easton, moving that into Fair Lawn. And then, partial modification here, again, with the Madison Secondary Education Program at Lindenwood, but still the same, rezoning current Lindenwood Elementary students to Willard and Taylor Elementary Schools, repurposing for the alternative ed program. I'll go over some details in a moment. In terms of Ruffner, Ruffner is 45% utilized. It's a good-quality school, lots to offer. It is under-resourced because it's less than half-full, and it's in an area with that chronic under-enrollment. So, there are 781 3-8 students who currently live in the Ruffner and Tidewater Park boundaries combined, that 575 of them are projected to attend Ruffner and TWP in '23 and '24. The difference between the two are those are choicing out to other programs, Gent and other programs, ADL. The Ruffner capacity is just about 1,200 students. This means that we can bring in, at minimum, 412, up to possibly 618 additional choice seats into Ruffner, making it a true choice option to provide a unique opportunity, a 3-8 opportunity, which is popular amongst parents, and you can see that in the data. And that is something that the division would work on in the timeline prescribed at the end of the presentation, to work with the community to define what is in demand and to make sure that it is a robust program. Looking at the details of the map here, you have 76 K-5 students from areas west of Church Street and the areas near Lindenwood Facility that would be rezoned to Taylor. You have the majority, 245 K-students, who live east of Church and north of Lafayette River, and the current Lindenwood would be rezoned to Willard, increasing the current utilization at both Willard and Taylor is about 2/3. So they themselves are underutilized. So you have undersized Lindenwood, next to two underutilized elementary schools. And to best concentrate the resource and provide these kids a well-resourced education at the elementary school, we look to perform this boundary change and then repurpose Lindenwood because the alternative program does not need the same capacity because it does not have the same enrollment and the same needs as a comprehensive elementary school. So it is right-size for an alternative program as opposed to a comprehensive. And that's a handful of these students, two dozen students from the Taylor Zone currently choice into other programs like Gent, Crossroads, and ADL. 78 in the new Willard Zone around Lindenwood do the same. That just means that with that choicing out and further area decline, even more space will become available in the coming years. So it's time to act, to do something to address that falling enrollment and underutilization, which furthers under resourcing. The net result is, if you, I want to call attention to the capacity of Lindenwood being under 300, Taylor's 500, Willard is over 800. So Lindenwood is about half to less than half the size of these other schools. That is about half or less or more than half the resources available to go into those kids' education. What this does is it moves from an undersized and thus overutilized school, because it's over, because you're just too small, to a better-utilized school in both cases, which will continue to go down as the enrollment declines as projected. This is just based on the current, which will decline. And it increases the economic diversity at the schools closer to the district average, which is 62%. So it checks a lot of positive boxes. The schools are 2.2 to 2.6 miles away from Lindenwood, and about 50-some-odd students who would be zoned to Willard are actually, currently in Lindenwood are actually closer to Willard than they are to Lindenwood. Here, that is in a simplified form. And the reason the boundaries are drawn how they are, it has to do with the contours of the river, has to do with up here, you've got St. Mary's, the cemetery, nobody's there, and then the main thoroughfare is here. And this keeps all of the middle school boundaries the same to Blair, Norview, and on the east side, Isaiah Gardens. So no middle school boundaries would change, feeders would change, rather. Tidewater Park to Ruffner in the 2023-24 school year, convert Ruffner to a 3-8. Here's all the data therein, and this ultimately moves to increasing the utilization at Ruffner to only 2/3. Even with the consolidation, Ruffner is only, is 2/3 full, which is where the opportunity for a choice program comes in, to use that capacity that's in good condition, to offer something that is in-demand, which the data clearly shows, given other similar programs, while further diversifying. So checking the boxes. Again, why Lindenwood makes sense. When you look for an alternative program, when you look at the building nuts and bolts condition itself, the vast majority of its condition needs are anticipated 15 to 20 years out, based upon life cycle deterioration. And the current most prior, highest priority need for the roofs are being accommodated in the CIP, so that its most acute need will be taken care of, and you're talking 15 years out before the other systems start needing major renovation or replacement. And as gone through the timeline here, this is a public hearing to address these different changes to the portfolio, to best concentrate the resources for the recommendations, and that the conversion of Ruffner to a 3-8 school with a specialized program would be a process that far extends this evening, goes far into next year, to work, specifically Dr. Gibson and team, and Dr. Birdsong's team would work with the community to define that. That is the end of my presentation as it is. Again, the point being, how do we address this underresourcing in a structural way so that we can structurally resource fully comprehensive, fully resource schools for our kids for the long haul? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sturts, and for all of the work that you and your team have done for us.
Please go fix it.
Okay.
Ms. Tanner, how many people have signed up for public comments? Okay.
We want to allow everyone a chance to sign up when we give this presentation.
Testing.
Okay. Madam Chair, for tonight's public comments, we have 19 individuals speaking tonight. For tonight's public comments, speakers have three minutes to provide public comments. A timer will alarm to signal the conclusion of your remarks. As a reminder, board members do not respond to public comments during this time. You are welcome to provide a copy of your remarks to the school board clerk, you can bring it to me, to share with the board. You may also email your comments to schoolboard@mps.k12.v a.us. Again, we have 19 speakers, and our first speaker is John Page, followed by Timmy Watkins.
Ms. Tanner, which lectern would you like them to go up to?
We'd like for you to come to this front lecture right here.
Okay. And if you would please describe your, just describe your affiliation with the schools, if you're an employee or a parent, we'd appreciate that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I know the school board can't respond, so y'all couldn't say "good evening." So I'm gonna go ahead and talk to the people over here for a minute. Good evening. I want to say thank you for taking the time to try to create a meeting where you could involve the public, because that was specifically what we were asking for. But we want to remind you, not on our watch, our children deserve better. I was prepared to speak in one direction, and after I heard the speaker, I thank him for saying no disrespect, because no disrespect is intended back. There are a lot of things going on in our community, and we're experiencing a lot of loss. And there are a lot of issues that I think we could tackle if we practiced a little more synergy. You're talking about taking a community school away from a community without spending time in that community. Board, you don't know this community, and that is the issue. We don't think that you're not qualified. We don't think that you're not educated. We don't think that you don't care about our children. We think that you think you know what's best for us and our children without us being included, and that's the part that we want to change. This appears to be protocol, that we're just coming to speak. Your decision has already been made. And I'm pretty sure if we had an interest in saving the school, our consultant could come and give us as many points of view as to why the school could be saved. Not only did you say that the school was underutilized, you were talking about the size of the school. Well, it was an annex that was torn down, and the modules are still up there for the school. The fear of our community, which has suffered so much loss, this is primetime waterfront property. We understand what we're being told about today, but as the past has shown us, there are greater visions over greater years for us to experience more loss. How much loss must our communities experience before we come together? Not just us, but you with us. There's not a person that I see out here that we don't see out here working in the community on a daily basis. I was supposed to tell you what my tie was. I've mentored at several schools in the city of Norfolk, including Lindenwood Elementary, through our Kappa League at Bogota T, where we brought students from Bogota T over to mentor the elementary students there pre-COVID. My Aunt Harriet Brown from Early Childhood Development at Norfolk State, after she retired, volunteered for over two years going in that school almost daily. Ms. Vivens, the first principal of Lindenwood, lived to be over 100 years old. She's affection, was affectionately known in Norfolk as Aunt Kitty. This school is historical. We know we have some challenges. We want to be included in so we can repair the issues. It's going to take the entire community. We're not saying that your job is easy. We're asking for you to do it in another fashion. Please, give us time. Remove this from the plan, because, Dr. Birdsong, we want Norfolk to be such a great school district that your children could go to school here.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Timmy Watkins. She's a concerned voter, followed by Benita Anthony with the Norfolk NAACP.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Timmy Watkins, and actually, I think he said it all. But my concern as a citizen, I went to Lindenwood Elementary from kindergarten to sixth grade, and my daughter went to Lindenwood Elementary. And like the gentleman said, I can understand that you all want to move the children to another school, repair that one, and put the children back in there. Why you can't put them back in the school that they were already in? Like he said, that's a historical area. Why do you want to tear it down and relocate? Tidewater Park, I understand because of the fact that you are tearing down the area, and you can move children there. But Lindenwood, I'm partial. I say just let Lindenwood stay where it's at. Sure, over the years, it has been needing repairs for such a long time. Everyone ignored it. Now, all of a sudden, they want to tear it down because it's too small. It was small then. Nothing's changed, but we do, and we would like for you all to fix it up, because there are a lot of people around there that want their children to go to the school in the neighborhood. If you tear Lindenwood down, the whole community is Lindenwood. Are you going to tear that down too? I'm just asking. If you all would consider what the gentleman said, what I'm saying, what we all are saying, think about us. And thank you for your time.
Benita Anthony.
I know we don't.
Followed by Loren Jones with NAACP.
Ms. Tanner, sorry, I'm not, sorry. We don't, we do not respond to public comment, but I do think it's important that I clarify that there, in our plan, there is no plan to tear down Lindenwood. So if anyone came here thinking that, that is misinformation. What we're planning to do, as Mr. Sturts had presented, is to move the Madison Program to Lindenwood, so it'll still stay open and serve our children. Thank you.
Okay, we have Loren, I mean, Benita Anthony, then followed by Loren Jones, NAACP.
We, the Norfolk Branch NAACP, are here to speak again on the most recent proposal for the Norfolk School Board to rezone students attending Lindenwood Elementary School. This matter calls for action from the Norfolk Branch as we seek to eliminate segregation and other discriminatory practices in public education and study local educational conditions affecting minority groups. The Norfolk Public Schools website states that the board is a cross-section of the city and truly represents all of Norfolk's citizens who share a common interest in our city's public schools. The website also states that you will be more purposeful and strategic in developing and sustaining effective partnerships with our families and other community stakeholders. We disagree. On February 23rd, this board failed to ensure that the students, parents, and stakeholders of the Lindenwood community received adequate notice to attend a parent meeting to provide meaningful feedback. During this meeting, the superintendent in attendance did not even give a word of comfort or ease to those who could attend on short notice. Instead, the chief schools officer facilitated the entire discussion. We find the board actions to allow these things to occur as blatant disrespect and disregard to the students, parents, teachers, families, and community leaders of the Lindenwood community. Today, we say, "Not on our watch," because our Black and Brown students deserve better. Stop being a rubber-stamp board that allows the presentation of documents with the expectation of approving all proposals and actions without any meaningful feedback from the community. Therefore, we, the Norfolk Branch NAACP, are seeking, are not seeking, but asking the board to remove the following items from the agenda. The closing of Tidewater Park Elementary School and folding it into a repurposed Ruffner 3-8 school for the 2023-24 school year, and the rezoning of students of Lindenwood Elementary School. Our immediate recommendations is to allow those living in the Lindenwood and the Tidewater Gardens community to continue to give meaningful feedback and input on the facilities plan with feedback without all the urban planning jargon for their schools before the board votes. Our children deserve better.
Loren Jones of the NAACP, followed by Susan Posey, who is a Lindenwood volunteer.
We, the Norfolk Branch NAACP, are here to eliminate segregation and other discriminatory practices that are occurring in Norfolk Public Schools. We are here to address the incompetency of the school board and the decisions that you all have made over the years that have impacted Black and Brown students. Today, we say, "Not on our watch," because our Black and Brown children deserve better. The school board members have made decisions that are totally disregarded the academic, social, and emotional well-being for schools serving larger portions of historically underserved groups of students. The school board members have hired a superintendent that lives in Chesapeake, a chief academic officer that lives in Virginia Beach, a chief finance officer that lives in Chesapeake, a chief schools officer that lives in Virginia Beach, a chief human resources officer that lives in the Richmond area, a chief information and instructional technology officer that lives in Pecos. lives in Picocson. The superintendent, to include six out of seven chief positions, are held by individuals who do not reside in Norfolk. However, you all have empowered and allowed them to make critical decisions that continue to cause disproportionate impacts on our most vulnerable schools and students. For the school board to continue to approve their actions is insane and demonstrates that you are incapable of understanding the needs of the students, parents, and families. This school district is no longer the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. The school board may have five goals for achieving equity and excellence for all, but we have our goal. Our goal is to ensure that five of those seats are filled with leaders that can make sound decisions in the best interests of Black and Brown students. Today, we say not on our watch because our Black and Brown students deserve better.
Next, we have Susan Posey, and she is going to speak about strategic plan. I'm sorry, I had you as a volunteer.
Yeah, I was very confused because I'm not a Lindenwood volunteer, and I guess we're all speaking about the strategic plan.
Yes, someone signed in the wrong area, so that's why.
My apologies. Okay, I tried to take the survey on the strategic plan. It was really confusing, and I'm college educated. But it strikes me that closing historically Black schools after very limited community engagement, when far fewer meetings seem to have been held due to COVID shutdowns, seems premature, to say the least. It's very likely that school enrollment will come back up now that schools are actually back at school. And also, why would you destroy part of a school and then say, oh, oops, now it's too small? My only connection to Lindenwood is that I've been to see the incredible school garden that is there. And that's an example that there's so much that can be done with a true community school that's in a true community. Putting the most challenged kids into a neighborhood that has its own challenges doesn't seem to make any sense. Please postpone the vote on this until the community has had a real chance to weigh in and actually help create the plan. Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Dolly, who is a Lindenwood volunteer, followed by Alton Robinson.
Good evening, everybody. I am Stephen Dolly. I am a resident of Lindenwood. I am a Norfolk City Tree Commissioner. I am a member of the Lindenwood Cottage Heights Barrow Park Civic League, and I am the basketball coach and volunteer tutor, mentor at Lindenwood Elementary. I was there today at the after-school program, and the children are not happy about this. They don't know what the future holds for them because they don't even know where they're going to be at next year. I tried to elaborate a little bit for them as to what the plan is. They believe this is a done deal, but it is not yet a done deal. The board still has to decide. This is just a recommendation. With all due respect to the recommendation, it doesn't take into consideration how we feel in Lindenwood about our elementary school. It is the epicenter of our neighborhood. It is where we send our Lindenwood babies. Shoe Park, Fairmont Park, Villa Heights, go to this school to get educated. It is a sense of pride for our community. Our Civic League president is a product of Lindenwood Elementary. We have, as Ms. Posey stated, we have a community garden in partnership with Phone, Friends of Norfolk's Environment, the Tree Commission. We have a 26-tree fruit orchard on the grounds of Lindenwood. We just had our shoreline restored there. We have berry bushes. We are doing things to garner sustainability in the city of Norfolk at Lindenwood Elementary. And these youngsters are taking part. They are learning, and to uproot them and to send them away from what we call home wouldn't be the best thing to do. And maybe if the, if the board, if there was a, I understand you guys are under a timeline and you have to get things going with this recommendation, but as far as repurposing Lindenwood, that's going to be a no. I don't think you're going to find anybody in the community. And if the community matters, you're going to find anybody in the community who is going to say they are with this. So thank you for your time, and I hope the school board makes the right decision. Thank you.
Alton Robinson, followed by Lana Presley.
Good evening. My name is Alton Robinson, and I'm just wondering, by show of hands, or maybe you could stand, who here to oppose what's going on in Lindenwood? Stand, whatever, just to show that you oppose this. Really, really? Need I say anymore? The community has come out, the community opposed this. In 1986, they resegregated the schools for the go-to elementary schools. They ended busing. So since they ended busing in 1986, how are the children going to get to the schools that you proposed to send them to without a bus? So are we going back to busing? I mean, what's, what's going on? 1986, resegregated elementary schools, go to your community school, and now you want to take these children out of their community school? Y'all were not on the school board in 1986, but I do remember marching in 1986. And in 1986, we could not prove that the school would be under-resourced, because underserved, that is. The schools are failing. We couldn't see it then. We had no idea because in 1986, we was against it. The school board moved along with resegregating the schools. Now, we against this. So now, are you going to be with the people who put you in place to represent their children, to do what is right by their children, who they come out here to oppose what you all have got the consultant to look into? So are we going to go with the people? That's all I ask. Because who are you here for, the school board? Are you here for the children and their parents? Or are you here for yourselves? Because if you make a decision to go against all these people that stood up and say they are opposed to this, then you must be here for yourself. Because we are opposed to this. It should be shut down and just thrown off the table and do, and have no idea of what we're going to do until we come up with a better plan and we include the community. That's all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Lana Presley with the Villa Heights Civic League, followed by Sharon Barnes, a Lindenwood Cottage Heights Barrow Park Civic League.
Good evening. My name's Lana Presley, and I live at 2833 Villa Circle, and I'm currently serving as the president of the Villa Heights Civic League. We, the community, vehemently do not want or accept the plan to transfer our youth from Lindenwood to other schools and place an alternative school in our neighborhood hidden from plain sight. We support alternative schools in a commercial or industrial setting, not in our neighborhood. You, the school board, and the Norfolk Public School Administration have failed to provide responsible transparency and accountability of community engagement. The steering committees for the facilities failed to represent our community. Who were the members on that, on those committees? How were they selected? We, were there parents and residents representing the community? Sending a communicate to parents is partially communicating with the community. A survey was sent to some to complete. The survey was extremely, extremely difficult and complex to follow. It was not sent to all residents via mailings or email. We, the community, have not been fully and appropriately engaged in this process. Your facility master plan, July 21, indicates Tyewater Park, our children were to go to Lindenwood and Madison, the Rose Mountain. When did that plan change? Why was it changed? Again, community engagement was provided insufficiently. We understand there are federal funds available to the city and possibly to the school board with deadlines attached. We recognize those deadlines. We recommend those funds be allocated to the rehabilitation of Lindenwood and Madison so we can maintain the status quo. We may maintain our neighborhood schools, and we want the board to vote no for the current plan. Thank you much.
Sharon Barnes, followed by Kezia Hendricks, a parent.
My name is Sharon Barnes. I am the current vice president of the Lindenwood Cottage Heights Barrow Park Civic League. I'm a longtime volunteer at Lindenwood Elementary School. My former husband and I bought our home in Lindenwood almost 30 years ago. I raised my two children, now adults, in Lindenwood. I am a legitimate stakeholder in my neighborhood in the city of Norfolk. First, I applaud you all for representing your city and your neighbors by serving on the school board. I know it's not an easy, easy job and that you have difficult decisions to make. The consultants you and the school district have hired to put together the MPS 2030 Facilities Master Plan have had a lot of information to compile and massage to come to their recommendations in the best of conditions. We've been in the throes of a pandemic for the past two years, making the process even more complicated. While the final facilities plan indicates that there were limited community meetings and a survey, the survey only resulted in 148 responses out of a city population of over 230,000 people. That doesn't seem very representative, representative to me. More community input is needed before a final plan is adopted. While I understand the need to consolidate and close underutilized schools in the district, we in Lindenwood do not want our neighborhood school, Lindenwood Elementary, closed. Our student population is largely a walking student body. Many of our families rely on public transportation. There's a school bus driver shortage. To bus our students out of their neighborhood to schools over two miles away would do little to encourage family engagement and would be a hindrance to attendance when the buses are not running as planned. Lindenwood Elementary's physical plant has largely been neglected for many years. We want investment, not divestment, from our community school. That would actually show that you care about our kids, who are not data points on graphs and charts. The school should be a beacon of environment resilient studies as it sits on the banks of the Lafayette River. There are untapped opportunities here for all of Norfolk's elementary school students. Previous consultants recommended that Lindenwood house a specialty program. There are a lot of pieces to this puzzle that have not been considered for the benefit of our Lindenwood families and the district as a whole when it comes to our neighborhood school. We respectfully request that you vote no on the recommended facilities plan as it has been presented and work toward amending the plan after soliciting additional community input from the citizens of Norfolk. Thank you, and I hope you consider this request.
Greetings. My name is Kezia Hendricks. I'm a mother of six children, a grandmother of one. Most of my children attend Norfolk public schools. I have adult children. And I believe that actions speak louder than words. I hear a lot of words, but your actions show that you're disconnected. Are you disconnected because maybe you're using outsiders who children don't even live in Virginia, Norfolk? Are you disconnected because, like the gentleman said earlier, like, a lot, most of the positions are held by people who don't even live in the city of Norfolk? Like, I feel like that your actions are showing that you don't really care that we come out to the school board meetings and we speak and we ask that you listen to us and we ask that you make decisions that impact Black and Brown students. Like, organize people, be organized money. And money, and like the young lady said, and data points, it seems to be the driving force with all, with everything that was going on. It was a lot of "we" that the gentleman was saying, "we, we, 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 we." And I don't really see him as "we" because the schools that are being impacted, like Lindenwood and moving Madison, like, it really don't look like "we" for him specifically and whoever else is making the decision. So I'm going to ask you guys that, you know, make your stress level and the burdens for the board. Let's lower that because the parents are not, us parents are not going to continue to see you make decisions that don't benefit our children, specifically in the Black and Brown community. Not on our watch. Y'all got to do better.
Nicole Sanders, a parent and community leader, and then followed by Deanna Nelson, a parent.
Excuse me. Hello. My name is Nicole Sanders. I'm a member of the community. I'm here to state there that there is nothing new that you're doing to our Black children. I'm here to say not on our watch. Our children deserve better. We will be silent no more. Our children deserve better. The school board needs to stop using outsiders to make decisions for our communities, rethink where Madison alternative schools should be relocated, recognize the system is designed to take care of white students, so put Black, that put Black and Brown families first, refrain from causing more stress on Black and Brown children and our families. You had a survey that had 148 responses in a city that has over 230,000 constituents. Each of you only needed 125 signatures to run for your position, which means that you don't even have enough pull in your districts, in the areas that you represent, to get people to do the survey. If you take 125 and times every person on the board, that's at least 875 people that could have responded to a survey. Who are you really representing? Clearly, you have no pull in our communities as a whole. We're done asking you. We're tired of playing nice. You see these folks here? We're done. At the end of the day, if we don't get what we want, we're ready to bring the fight to you. We keep telling you that. We're not going to keep showing up here and saying, wasting our times, because you're not listening to us. So I am suggesting to the folks that are here, we're tired, right? If they don't do what we're asking them, meet me outside. Let's, let's, let's bring the fight to them because seats are up. I'm willing to help you get them out of here. I'm ready to get you out of here. We're ready to get you out of here because you're not doing what you need to do for our communities. We're done asking. We're done playing nice. You couldn't even get 125 people in your ward. Let that sink in your head right now, that you could not get people in your area, your closest friends. You got them same folks to sign your petitions to get into positions, right? You couldn't even get those same folks that live in Norfolk because you have to live in Norfolk to sign a petition to run for office. You couldn't even get those same folks to care about our Black and Brown students? Not on our watch. So if you don't tighten up, we're going to get you up out of here. And I'm willing to stand out here. I'm willing to give my phone number. I'm willing to knock doors. I'm willing to get signatures because you're not going to continue to destroy my community where my kids go to school at and the other children in the community. These are my babies too, whether I birthed them or not. And I'm not going to keep coming here, wasting my time, and telling you what we're not going to do. Not on our watch.
Next, we have Barrett Hicks, followed by Tracy Becken of the Lindenwood Civic League.
Whew. Good evening. Folks, we've seen this.
Folks, we've seen this show before. Even from the same consultants, change of names, whatnot, they talk about making these beautiful buildings. But you guys failed to ensure that the resources are in the house. My first question tonight is that you fixed some of the things prior to talking about disseminating and turning up neighborhoods. We saw that happen at Southside STEM Academy. That's right, I can still come back there, because this is exactly what this looks like. We know when Southside STEM Academy was built, everybody on this board was in some position in Norfolk Public Schools. So it's you guys, each and every one of y'all. From the board chair, her input was from as the librarian, library. Rodney, Noel, Tanya, you guys was at the hip. You loved each other. Ms. Kanson, you've been in the school system. Dr. Bergson, we got behind you to make the differences. Carlos, you read such a great time when you were out there raising funds. Brother Ransum, you were on, you were with us at Southside STEM, and we know where we are right now. Southside STEM, going through the same stuff we're talking about right now, is ranked eighth or lower than all schools in the state of Virginia, with the sister school, St. Helena, fifth. Fifth. That's in the city of Norfolk. You same folks. My brother said that you guys weren't here in 1986, but you surely been here for the last twelve. It's time for change, but I know you guys are good people. It's time to start looking at what's in the best interest of our children. I surely come and supported the Lindenwood folks, because we've seen it. We saw them separate the kids over at Camp Estella and took them across town and then brought them back. And they've never recovered. Again, eighth from the bottom of all schools in the state of Virginia, or if not lower. I'm asking you guys to fix that part first. Fix that. Individually, or as you do whatever you're planning to do now. I want you guys to know, we're too late when we're coming in this meeting. We've got to start to mobilize early on and be at the first meetings. And you're right about this consultant. I'm telling you, this is the same consultant. They just changed their names of what happened at Southside STEM Academy. How do I know? Because I was there and will continue to be here. Thank you very much.
Tracy Beckton, followed by Neil George of Lindenwood.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Beckford. I am a Norfolk native and a proud Lindenwood resident. I'm also an educator here in Norfolk Public Schools, and I'm a Lindenwood Elementary alumnus. Converting Lindenwood Elementary School to an, as to, and let me slow down, to an alternative school is the wrong message to send within our community. It's all about the message. The message of positivity and education is what we need within our community, not negativity and incarceration. To actually take a school that has historically represented Black people for decades and to say, "Here you go, let's put an alternative school here", is the wrong message to send to our youth. I am a parent. I am a grandparent. I am an educator. So I deal with these things on a daily basis. So again, as I drive home, as I leave this very school and I drive home, there's different things that I see. And the last thing that I would like to see, a block away from my house, are children who are in an alternative setting. It is the wrong message. It is never the right message. Historically, within our communities, we have been placed near railroad tracks. We've had trucking companies placed in our communities. The air that we breathe is even dangerous itself. So now the air of despair is the message that we want to send. That is not the message that our youth need. And again, my heart hurts right now, because I'm a part of this community. I love this community. And we need to do better. We need to do better, every single day, by our youth. The message again is about positivity, not negativity. They no longer need these images in front of them. They see it on TV every day. They turn on the news, they see people being shot, and the next thing I need to do is come home and say, "Look at the school I used to go to. Now it's a mini-prison. Is that my future?" That is not their future. It is too many of us in this community. I'm a proud product of Norfolk Public Schools. I didn't have to make the decisions that I made, but I'm here. And I'm just telling you, it's something different that we have to do. It has to be a different message, or nothing's going to change. Nothing in itself will change. So I'm hoping, and I know I've heard it, the decisions have been made, but I'm hoping that change is possible. I'm hoping for a message of hope that y'all hear us and you understand that we need something different in our community. We're about uplifting. We're about upward movement. We need that positivity in our community. We need it. We don't need anything negative ever again in our community. It's enough. We need y'all to make the right decision for us. Thank you.
Next, we have Neil George, followed by Whitney Whitlow.
Thank you all. Hey, I am Neil George. I am a teacher at Maury. Gave you honey last week, or a few weeks ago. And so as I was listening to them talk about Lindenwood, I was really excited about the, because I didn't know about the garden. I run the gardens at Maury, and so I'm really excited to get those kids with passion for learning, with passion that they can see their education every day as they walk around their community. Anyway, I got off track there. I'm sorry. I am a parent of two kids who graduated from Maury High School. Norfolk Public Schools has done an incredible job preparing my kids for school, for college. They're doing very well. And I thank you all, because you've given them a lot of incredible opportunities. So thank you for that. Yeah, you have some difficult decisions to make. We all do. I'm hoping that you're gonna take your time for these decisions, that you really think about what it is that you've gotta do in looking for the future. And I want to come back to that, not to be hasty. I am part of Fairmont Park. I love my community. We're not two and a half miles away from the school. We're only a little over a mile and a half away from Lindenwood. But if you move the school two and a half miles away, we're four miles, four and a half miles, five miles in some areas of my community. There are some people in my neighborhood who are not gonna make it to school for school events. It's just not gonna happen. They're not gonna be able to do it. Norfolk Public Schools is, and I really believe this, I believe this with all my heart, that we are the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. My community lost Lafayette Winona ten years ago. My community might be losing Lindenwood now. I love the idea about working on Maury. I love it. But I'm a little concerned. Ten years from now, I'm gonna be saying goodbye to Maury. Maybe. Maybe it'll be a new Maury. I don't know. I do have a suggestion, because I do agree that Madison needs to move. When I was there, it's worse than my classroom at Maury. It's pretty bad, and y'all know that. I'm suggesting that you move Madison to CAB. You know, juvenile relations moved out. You got a whole building over there. You guys and some of the people at CAB, they're our most experienced staff. They're certified teachers. They have masters in this and that and the other thing. I suggest that y'all spend an hour a week at Madison. Work with our kids who need you the most. The superintendent, you know, all, everyone, senior coordinators, teachers, specialists, everyone who's got a teaching certificate should be involved in a classroom. You know, I really encourage, I guess I'm out of time. But anyway, I thank you all. I appreciate you all. And, you know, I got my smart board. I'm happy about that. I need Wi-Fi. Forty percent of my kids do not get on their Chromebooks, because, I'm sorry.
It's Whitney Whitlow? I'm Nathan Whitlow. My wife asked me if I could come up and speak for her. Nathan Whitlow? Nathan, okay, thank you. So my wife just asked me if I'd come up and speak in her place. She gets a little anxious sometimes. So I didn't come here honestly with a big speech or to oppose anything, and I thank all of you, because I didn't know as much about the Lindenwood Elementary School. We're pretty new to the community. We're a Navy family that moved here. We have a son who's three years old and has autism and attends Easton Preschool. So we found out a couple weeks ago via message from the principal about this meeting to talk about the buildings plan. And we hadn't heard about it honestly at all. I might have missed it. I was deployed for eight months of the last year. So maybe you missed it during that time. But just tried to go online and find out more about what that meant for his program at Easton and the move to Fairlawn. Couldn't really understand what it really meant from the plans that were on there, the documents that are on there. And if anything, being here tonight and hearing all these people speak passionately and wonderfully about their situations, it's shown that it seems like there may be some difficulties with communication here in the community with the school board. I, because like I said, I consider myself a pretty smart person. I'm a physician, you know, I've been pretty well-educated. And I had a hard time understanding what this was supposed to mean for my son and for next year, for his education, continuing in special education. You know, as a physician, I can come up with the best evidence-based, scientific, backed plan for my patient. But if the patient doesn't understand the plan and there isn't buy-in, then it's gonna fail. And so that's the impression I'm getting tonight. And so I honestly came to listen to the presentation, hoping I would get the answers to my questions. I can't ask you guys questions tonight here, but I'm just saying the message isn't coming through. Whatever this plan is supposed to be, I don't understand all of it. And I hope that you guys find a better way to communicate it to the community. Thank you.
Next, we have Vicki Greco, followed by Tracy Hansley, for Groom with Greatness, Groom for Greatness. Okay, Vicki Greco, followed by Tracy Hansley, Groom for Greatness. And there's a correction. We have eighteen speakers. One person crossed themselves out.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Manugo-Greco. I'm an MPS parent and Lake Taylor graduate, former MPS special educator, and persistent PTA and school board advisory committee volunteer. Thank you for having this public hearing on the decisions that will shape the lives of our students who learn at Easton Pre-K, Madison Alternative, Roughneer, Tidewater Park, and Lindenwood Elementary. Along with my appreciation to our school's governance team, I'd like to also offer my input about your responsibilities as school board members. And I'll frame it starting with a quote from Judge Amy Berman Jackson. "As a public official, you're supposed to live up to the higher standard of ethics and integrity, and that's not unfair. You chose that role for yourself. After holding yourself out year after year and asking the public to name you to a position of awesome power and leadership and responsibility, to trust you, you owe them," end quote. "We trust you to fully commit to the fundamental belief that our children's schools aren't just about the buildings they learn in each day. Our schools are also about our students and staff, who must be valued and respected by the decision-makers and school policymakers who must serve them. We trust you to know that no matter what our governor thinks equity means for our students and their public education, we, your constituents, rely on and trust you to work to desegregate our schools and stop isolating and marginalizing our students of color and reinvest the necessary human and financial and instructional resources to ensure each and every one of our schools provide high-quality, effective education in the buildings that are worthy of our students, all our students and all of our city's neighborhoods. We trust you will do everything in your authority to hold our school divisions administration accountable, to fully plan, develop, and implement effective teaching and reaching to really meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of all students, including our exceptional learners and our students with disabilities and our scholars demonstrating learning loss. We trust you also want all of our schools to be vibrant, socio-economically-integrated centers of our communities for all of our students, families, neighbors, business owners, and all who benefit from our city's successful pre-K-12 students, who are set up to succeed because they are in fact ready for their future career, college, and civic responsibilities. We trust you. Do the right thing, please. Thank you."
Tracy Hansley, Groom for Greatness.
Hello, my name is Tracy. I'm from Groom for Greatness. I love seeing everyone out here passionately talking about saving your communities, because it's very important. But I came for something different. I actually have my own business. I'm a COVID tester. So what I was trying to do was figure out who I need to get in contact with to see if you were interested in having COVID testing at the senior prom and ring dances this year, being that this is the first senior prom and ring dance since COVID. But I couldn't get in contact with anybody. Went to Norfolk State. We do testing at Norfolk State. I went to VOTEC. I graduated with my LPM from there, my RN from Norfolk State University. I was a school nurse at Poplar Halls Elementary. I worked at Norfolk City Jail. I work at Norfolk General. And I actually worked on the COVID unit. When the test, when the vaccinations first came out, I personally saw all of the, our numbers went down. Everybody thought things were getting better. They skyrocketed back up. I saw that at Norfolk General. So I was just interested in wondering if Norfolk Public Schools was interested in offering free COVID testing at the senior prom and ring dance this year for the students. That's all. Thank you.
Dr. Martinez concludes our speakers signed up for this evening.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming out and speaking, and we'll take this under consideration. And so at this point, we're gonna reconvene our meeting, our work session.
Are you doing it? I might go get my sandwich.
I think it was twenty-five. for students to reengage positively. You know, I know one of the speakers talked about that, being positive, and that's what we hope to do in that area. Next slide, please. As you can see from what has been presented so far, we put extraordinary efforts into providing schools what they need, when they need it. However, there's still more. This slide details supports for our early childhood efforts. Research supports that our youngest children were amongst the hardest hit by the suspension of in-school services. Consider the challenges that our teachers face when trying to teach kindergarten students how to read in a virtual environment. To undergird under early childhood programs, we are recommending the following: seven additional pre-K teachers and seven additional pre-K teacher assistants to support the continued development of a mixed instructional delivery program model; three school counselors for our early childhood programs as to support our youngest children with navigating school academically, emotionally and behaviorally, and engage our parents in the process; funds for direct mailings to provide foundational information to the families with preschool-aged children, and of course, this will help considerably with recruitment efforts to ensure our enrollment is substantive; the establishment of a parent learning center to assist families with getting their preschoolers off to a great start. We believe that when parents learn about the instruction that's taking place in our classrooms, they will become even more engaged in their children's education. And of course, we need the appropriate level of supplies to ensure that we have adequate materials for each child. Next slide, please. And now let's move on to what we have done in this budget proposal to enhance special education services. During school closure, all students had their routines disrupted, but the children who were perhaps most affected were our students with disabilities. Generally speaking, students with disabilities require the benefit of a structured routine. Parents have noted how thankful they were once schools reopened and routines were once again underway. Here's how we intend to support our most vulnerable student population. We will move funds into the operating budget for an administrative position that was previously grant-funded. This staff member serving in this role supports special education teachers in their work with students and with our families. This movement will solidify our commitment to working alongside families to help their children succeed in school. Two other additions are a data and reporting specialist to increase the use of data to inform instruction and to help meet reporting requirements. We are also proposing an additional teacher specialist to better manage compliance, IEP development and instruction. We also plan to provide labs for our students with disabilities that will, will support vocational training and skill development as well as the positive behavioral characteristics expected of these children in our workplace or in the workplace. And finally, we will be putting into play social-emotional supports for students with disabilities, which will include targeted instructional resources, online learning platform lessons and progress monitoring tools. Our efforts will also provide staff, parent and caregiver training, additional assessments for students and a social skills curriculum. Next slide, please. And please note that this slide marks our last in priority three, in the priority three area. We are still focusing on supports for our students with disabilities here. Some other plans encompassed in this budget proposal are funds to align our various curricula to provide the foundation for the effective delivery of instruction and intervention for our self-contained programs, tutoring support designed to facilitate learning recovery, specialized professional development to train more teachers on the letters program. This program, whose formal name is Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, has been proven, proven effective in our outreaches and therefore we want to expand it. And finally, this proposal provides additional supports for students who are deaf or hard of hearing. Specifically, we plan to purchase the FearView Learning Program, which facilitates fluency in both English and American Sign Language. And we also plan to purchase tactile social-emotional toolkits for elementary-age students with hearing, hearing loss and a self-advocacy life skills curriculum. Next slide, please. Okay, safety and security is the focus of priority four. However, that does not mean it ranks fourth, of course, in our priorities. Fourth is just where it falls in this presentation because in actuality, safety and security, as you know, must be every school division's top priority. This fiscal year, we've made significant strides in maintaining a self-insecure environment for students and staff. One notable example is the launch of an app that allows students, families and the community to report safety concerns. We also took great care to improve the physical safety of our buildings and we've discussed that a little bit this evening as well. For instance, we improved ventilation systems in many of our schools. Our focus remains laser-like for the 2022-2023 school year. Our budget proposal underwrites six roving security officers at the elementary level, which will help improve access to security services. The purpose, the purchase of PPE and other related supplies because, believe it or not, the pandemic is not quite yet over yet. More funding set aside across grade levels for additional supplies to prevent sharing. And finally, we intend to purchase additional two-way handheld radio transceivers to ensure that our school administrators have the tools that they need to effectively communicate with staff throughout the instructional day. Next slide, please. Our fifth priority centers on the continuous improvement of our technology infrastructure and instructional support. We have several additional, additions to share in this area. For one, we intend to add a virtual learning administrator to facilitate division-wide effectiveness with all online learning platforms, particularly with those programs now in high use such as Canvas and Zoom. Virtual and online learning are here to stay, as we know, and we must continue to improve these supporting resources so they are a real value, of real value to staff and students. And having a champion in this area will support our work and outcomes for our students immensely. We also included five additional instructional technology resource teachers, i.e. ITRTs, within this budget proposal. This will allow us to provide one ITRT per secondary school in a minimum of one halftime position per elementary school. Moving on in this area, it's become apparent that there are hackers out in this world who are looking to find vulnerabilities in large organizations' infrastructures. Therefore, MPS recommends providing additional funding for undergirding our network and cybersecurity. As you know, safeguarding our data, services and systems is a must. And the MPS administration also intends to create and maintain a robust data warehouse, which can deliver customized reports as schools and the division work to align instructional strategies with identified needs. Next slide, please. In recent years, the school division has made significant progress in closing the digital divide amongst our students. We will not falter on this path. Therefore, this recommendation supports purchases designed to ensure all students continue to have access to the internet and appropriate technology. Toward that end, we intend to buy additional Mi-Fi devices and replacement Chromebooks and iPads for students as well as laptops for our teachers. And for safety and security, we will also purchase software to monitor students' use of these devices. In other action, we propose to initiate improvements to our student information system. Purchase additional flat-screen panels so this effective technology is in widespread use in our classrooms and ensure an appropriate replacement cycle for our administrators' desktop computers as they have requested. Next slide. Our sixth priority is addressed by the capital improvement program budget, which you are aware is a budget that is separate and apart from the operating budget. Following my presentation, Mr. Jenkins will provide a detailed overview of the proposed CIP. And I think I mentioned this, this evening, proposed at the historic level of $167.6 million, the FY23 CIP provides us the wherewithal to tackle many important initiatives such as the replacement or renovation of Moore High School. It will also allow us to accomplish strategic door, window and roof replacements. For example, Booker T. Washington High School is slated to receive such replacements at a cost of approximately $10.8 million. Next slide. All right, the school board will be gratified, I'm sure, to note that this is the last slide in my part of the presentation. I know it's been a last, a long evening, but as you can understand, there are important initiatives that do not fall neatly in the six areas that I just reviewed. These priorities are listed on this slide. We would like to hire an additional human resources administrator to manage the significant increased workload this department is facing due to the pandemic and other personnel-related matters. The pandemic alone has caused myriad human resources issues to arise from new leave procedures to increased demand for personnel data. In the area of community engagement, which has been an important stated priority for the school board, we intend to add a communications administrator so our communications and community engagement outreaches are holistic and proactive. And proactive, we hear you. Additionally, effective and ongoing two-way communication with our stakeholders, as you know, that's vitally important. Therefore, we plan to purchase a platform that will foster community participation in our division-wide decision-making process. And finally, Norfolk Public Schools needs to continue its work in the area of effective planning for the renovation, consolidation and rebuilding of our schools. Consequently, consequently, we are including funds for consulting services that will help to continue to guide us in this all-important planning. In closing, let me offer this philosophical thought: quality public education in this country is often the absolute best hope children have for a better future. Horace Mann, a pioneer of public schools, once said, "Let us not be content to wait and see what will happen, but give us the determination to make the right things happen." Public education has been beset by a pandemic, political divisiveness and economic and social pressure. Norfolk Public Schools has felt this pressure. But while admittedly, we have buffeted, we have never stopped toward this end. We will make the right things happen for our children, no matter what. And let me repeat that. We will make the right things happen for our children, no matter what. So ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, this is a no-matter-what budget. My team and I present it to you knowing that it has been shaped to make the right things happen for the thousands of children whom we serve. Thank you for your kind attention. I will now pass the presentation to our chief finance officer, Mr. Steve Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Appreciate that and a little hard act to follow, but thank you.
Madam Chair, can you just try to reset the flow for the rest of the meeting?
The rest of the meeting? So we're going to, after Mr. Jenkins' presentation, what I've discussed with Dr. Birdsong is that we'll be able to schedule two-by-twos all of next week with Dr. Birdsong to ask any questions that you may have about the budget. And then, of course, we can discuss publicly at our meeting to prepare for the vote next week, or in two weeks, sorry, I keep saying next week. And then, yeah, so that we're going to finish with this and then that would be the time to ask questions at our next meeting. Or beforehand, doing, in two-by-twos.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Martin. I'm going to start just with a little bit about health insurance, employee health insurance. We have proposed increases of 6%. The contribution that the school board will, that makes will go up by 6% as will the employee's premium. We currently have three plans, a health savings account, or it's a high deductible plan with a health savings account. It has a $1,500, excuse me, $1,500 deductible. There's also two point-of-service plans, one with a $1,000 deductible and one with a $750. And we offer plans to, in four tiers: employees only, employee and a spouse, an employee with minors and then family. I'm not sure what I did. There we go. This is the impact of a couple of, these two slides show you what the impact of the increase in the premiums are compared to a person's salary. And these are similar to slides you've seen before. In this particular case, we have to classify, let me go back, I need the two teachers. Okay, so we have two teachers. In this plan, we have
Consequently, we are including funds for consulting services that will help to continue to guide us in this all-important planning. In closing, let me offer this philosophical thought. Quality public education in this country is often the absolute best hope children have for a better future. Horace Mann, a pioneer of public schools, once said, "Let us not be content to wait and see what will happen, but give us the determination to make the right things happen." Public education has been beset by a pandemic, political divisiveness, and economic and social pressure. Norfolk Public Schools has felt this pressure. But while admittedly, we have buffeted it, we have never stopped toward this end. We will make the right things happen for our children, no matter what. And let me repeat that. We will make the right things happen for our children, no matter what. So ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, this is a no-matter-what budget. My team and I present it to you, knowing that it has been shaped to make the right things happen for the thousands of children whom we serve. Thank you for your kind attention. I will now pass the presentation to our chief finance officer, Mr. Steve Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Appreciate that, and a little hard act to follow, but thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Can you just try to reset the flow for the rest of the meeting?
The rest of the meeting? So we're gonna, after Mr. Jenkins' presentation, what I've discussed with Dr. Birdsong is that we'll be able to schedule two-by-twos all of next week with Dr. Birdsong to ask any questions that you may have about the budget. And then, of course, we can discuss publicly at our meeting to prepare for the vote next week, or in two weeks, sorry, I keep saying next week. And then, yeah, so that we're gonna finish with this, and then that would be the time to ask questions at our next meeting. Or beforehand, doing, in two-by-twos.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Martin. I'm gonna start just with a little bit about health insurance, employee health insurance. We have proposed increases of 6%. The contribution that the school board will, that makes will go up by 6% as will the employee's premium. We currently have three plans, a health savings account, or it's a high deductible plan with a health savings account. It has a $1,500 deductible. There's also two point-of-service plans, one with a $1,000 deductible and one with a $750. And we offer plans to, in four tiers: employees only, employee and a spouse, and employee with minors, and then family. Not sure what I did. Oh, there we go. This is the impact of a couple of, these two slides show you what the impact of the increase in the premiums are compared to a person's salary. And these are similar to slides you've seen before. In this particular case, we have two classified, let me go back, I need the two teachers. Okay, so we have two teachers. In this plan, we have a teacher who is currently on step six in 2022. You can see her history going, his or her history going back. She would, he or she would move to step seven next year. Her current gross pay is $2,265.68, and it will be $2,400. And these are, these are the, each period pay. So that person would receive a pay raise of $134.50. It's about a 5.9% increase. The health insurance for that employee would go from $9 to $9.50, or about 50 cents, or 50 cents exactly. Teacher number two is currently on step 14, earns $2,654.64 per period. Next year, the person would make $2,798.43, an increase of $143.79. This particular person is on a mid-level plan, they're in the, on the point-of-service plan with a family. Their current premiums are $219.50. It would move to $232.50 next year, or an increase of $13. You know, notice the increase is higher than the previous case. The teacher number one was on the high-deductible plan, the HSA 1500. These are two classified employees, they actually are bus drivers. The first employee also has the high-deductible plan. Their current gross pay on step six is $808.54. It would increase by $61.52 to $870 and some change, about a 7.6% increase. This person's premium would go up by 50 cents, from $9 to $9.50. The second employee is also a bus driver. The person is currently on step 14, so they're paid a little more, $947.29. It would increase to $1,019.64, or $72.35 each pay period. Their premiums would go up by $13. They are also a, on the mid-level POS 1,000 with a family. So their premiums would go up from $2,195 to $232.50, or $13. Our reasoning, our first, displaying this information or dragging through this is to make sure it's clear that while we are increasing premiums by 6%, it's on a very small number. The preponderance of an employee's pay will not go to health insurance. And especially in the case of the high-deductible plan, it's a very small amount, a very small increase. Now, to get back to the budget, these are, this is a very high-level summary of the changes from the current budget to the proposed budget. And you'll notice at the bottom, I'll start from the bottom and work up, the total increases and the expenditures from, for the general fund budget from '22 to '23 is $21.9 million, the same increase in revenue. The changes that are in the budget are to increase salaries and wages by $13.5 million. This is by and large pay raises, it is not new positions. There's also an increase in employee benefits of $6.7 million. So these are the benefits on the pay raise plus the increase in the health insurance. We have a provision of $2 million for implementation of the compression study. As Dr. Birdsong had said previously, what we're, we're currently analyzing what the consultants have recommended, and we're looking at what we think is a good proposal and actually implementing it over a four-year period so that we can affordably push our not only our teachers, but all of our staff up into the scale based on their service. Other costs, which are largely non-salary costs or non-personnel costs, so it'd be wages, excuse me, not wages, but supplies, utility costs, anything else, repairs, would go up by $3 million. And then, we've added, Dr. Birdsong has presented new positions. We have actually identified 90 new positions to add, and it costs $6.4 million. However, many of those positions are coming from realigning the district's priorities and their resources. So there's also 23 positions that are peeled off, or their duties are changed to permit the addition of the 90. So that saves $900,000. We're also experiencing declining enrollment, so we are reducing the number of classroom teachers by 40, which saves 2.8 million. We have fewer students, so we can reduce the number of teachers without affecting class sizes. And most of, and I would say, preponderance of these positions are going to be, are vacant. We also have a provision for savings of $6 million from attrition. This occurs again when a less, a person who earns less replaces a highly-paid person who had recently retired. So we have increases of a net 27 new positions. The total cost of the increases, including wages, benefits, and other costs, is $31.6 million, with reductions of $9.7 million. So the net increase is 21.9. So a lot of numbers, but increase in the budget of 21.9 and a net 27 increase in positions. So our fiscal '23 budget, as we've said previously, it is based on Governor Northam's introduced budget. That's a biennial budget. It was released in December. We are also using the March, a projection of March ADM at 25,342 students, which is down several hundred from the current, from the current budget. And we're also using the city's revenue allocation policy to determine city funding. So our total budget is $376.7 million, at 6.2%, or 21.9 million above the current level. This is a graph of our general operating budget or our general fund budget. You can see salaries actually are, make up $226.7 million, or 60% of our budget. When you combine that with employee benefits, you can see that of our general fund budget, 85 cents of every dollar goes to employee pay or benefits. So employee compensation absorbs 85% of our general fund budget. That leaves just 15% for everything else, including the heating and the cooling, the materials and supplies that we buy, the maintaining of the buildings, everything that goes in the building. This is another picture of our budget indicating which programs or functions our fund, our budget goes to. And you can see that almost three-quarters, 73.4% of our budget, or $276 million, is for instructional services, our primary, our mission. The other, approximately a quarter, a little over 25%, is in the support areas. 6.1% goes to administration attendance and health. Transporting students largely to and from school absorbs almost 4%. Maintaining our facilities costs $42.3 million, or 11.2%. And then, there's improvements to facilities, and then significant recurring spending in technology, about 4% of our budget. I won't read all of this to you, but this is a quick summary of the coronavirus grants, the federal grants that we have received over the last couple of years, mostly to, to respond to the impact of the pandemic. You can see, we received a couple of CARES funds, the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the CARES ESER and CARES ESER Set-A-Side. That all came out of the very first CARES Act that was passed in March of 2020. The largest one was just under $13 million. It's the second line. You can see that most of those funds have been spent. In fact, of the $443,000 that's remaining, a lot of those were initially reserved for, for private schools. The first line was another coronavirus fund that we received with a deadline that has passed, and all of the funds have been spent. The next large one is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation. That's the wide one in the middle, right there. And you can see, that's $50 million. We have spent about $18.3 million, so we've spent just over a third of that now. The other really large one is the American Rescue Plan, ESER III, budget of $113,301. That was just appropriated by city council last week. We have, since this was, since this was, actually, this is dated February 22nd. At this point, we have spent about $12.5 million, $12.7 million, mostly in orders that we have issued under ESER III. So we are working on implementing that project as well. So in total, we have received $188 million in coronavirus funds, federal funding from the government, from the federal government. We have spent just under $36 million, plus the 12 that's not on here, so 47 or 48 million. And there's significant funds left. You can see the expiration dates for the two large ones are September of '23 and September of '24. Now, if I can shift gears, we'll talk about briefly the capital improvement revisions. Our capital improvement budget is based on the capital improvement plan that you approved in July of 2021. So at that, we had prepared a five-year capital improvement plan. This plan for fiscal '23 is based on that five-year plan. There are revisions that, as I had said earlier, when we were talking about reversion funds. We have had, we have been in discussions with city personnel regarding replacement of schools over the next 10 years, so there are revisions for that. And as we've talked about already, the first school is Maury High School. We've also done some updating about, on our product, our project pricing based on the escalating prices that we're seeing on our, on our projects. And we've also added state, the state construction funding that was proposed by Governor Northam in fiscal 2023. That was $10.6 million. Those, of course, are funds that we did not, were not aware would be coming to us when we release the capital plan in July. So, the capital improvement budget for 2023, and this does not include the reversion funds. We have $1 million for school bus replacements, and this is an annual allocation. $3 million of city funding for deferred maintenance. We are expecting to receive proceeds from the sale of the SWIFT project. This is, this was sold to HRSD. That parcel was sold, and we are receiving $6 million a year. Fiscal '23, I believe, is, I think we have three years left, going through '25, I believe. And then, there's sale, a sale from the property that the casino is purchasing. There was a resolution where $5 million of that sale would go to each of two schools. So we've included $5 million in this plan for use at the Maury High School. And then, you see state construction funds of $10,627,000. These funds are proposed to go to projects at Booker T. Washington School, High School. And then, $142 million, this would come from the city issuance of debt in order to replace or renovate Maury. So the projects that are recommending, recommended, obviously, Maury, we've talked about that plenty, is $147 million in this capital projects budget. And there's also the $3 million in the, in the reversion account, bringing the total to the cost, the estimated cost of $150 million. But in the capital projects budget, $147. School board, excuse me, school bus replacements, $1 million. Deferred maintenance on roofs, $11.7 million, and nearly $8 million for the replacement of windows and doors. The actual details on the roofs are on this slide. We need additional funding at the Belmore Complex. That is not a school, obviously, but the support facilities have roofs on them, and they leak too. So we need a million and a half to complete that job, that project, which is, already has some funding. The Booker T. Washington High School project, $7.2 million for the roof. I will say that this includes a recharacterization of some fiscal '22 funding that was previously from the reversion account. We like to move the, we'd like to use the school construction grant in one place so it's clean and clear as to what we, how we spent those funds. And then, replacement at a roof at Little Creek Elementary, the Nancy, the Nancy Street facility. For windows and doors, $3,610,000 at Booker T. Washington, and that does include approximately $1 million of, that's in the '22 budget for, from the reversion account. So this would move those, that would, that would move the funding for that project to the state construction grant. Lake Taylor High School went to indoor replacements along with the tech center. So a total of $7,916,447. So, our total budget is on this slide. You can see that currently, the budget fiscal '22, $613.9 million. Notice that the ESER funds are, on this slide, are $174 million. So this actually reflects the appropriation that the council made last week. The fiscal '23 budget is just a little smaller, largely because that ESER fund that you see in '22 does not appear in '23. So our general fund budget goes from $354.9 million to $376.7, $21 million increase, or 6.2%. A relatively smaller increase in the school nutrition program, an increase of $1 million from '22 to '23 million. Grants and special programs go up $7.3 million. The ESER fund, we have two relatively small grants that came from the American Rescue Plan of $1.9 million that have not previously been, that we were not aware of previously. So they would be appropriated starting in July of 2022, this year. And then, our capital improvement plan that I just reviewed with you, which totals $167.6 million, which is compared to last year's $27.7. So our total budget is similar in size to the total budget, the total revised budget from last year, but the individual funds are much different. So moving forward, this, on March 16th, you are scheduled to take action on your budget. So that's coming up in two weeks. April 1st is our statutory deadline to get your budget to the city, to the city council. In May of 2022, the city council will then take action. We expect an appropriation early in the month. If there are differences between your proposed budget and what the council actually approves, it would come back to you for amendment in adopting a final budget for 2023. Dr. Martin, that concludes my comments. I think Dr. Birdsong and I would be happy to try to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
We'll just take about, we'll take the next five, five or so minutes and start off some questions, but otherwise, I think that we can take this information back and, and on our own, work through it, and then schedule two-by-twos next week with Dr. Birdsong, and then we can come back for discussion and vote on March 16th. So, Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Dr. Martin, for the board's consideration, I personally benefit from hearing, you know, the questions that my colleagues ask, and especially as we we work toward coming to any sort of an agreement on what we hope to see in the budget, um, or change, or expand on, any of those, um, you know, areas that, um, I feel like, I personally don't support the two-by-twos in this situation because, like I said, I like to hear what, what my colleagues have to say, um, and I want them to hear what questions and ideas that I have as well. So may I recommend that we have a special call, a special meeting, um, as we've done in the past. We've reserved Wednesdays, especially during budget discussions to have, you know, so that we could have continued deliberation over the, the budget.
Um, I don't have my calendar for me. I don't know if we, that we can, are guaranteed to be able to do that next Wednesday. So, I mean, if you guys want to sit here and have questioning, we can continue that. I was trying to be mindful of everyone's time, um, because as, it's getting pretty late and we still have other items on our agenda.
Well, yes, and, and that's why I was suggesting that with respect to time and with five minutes, um, if I heard you correctly, for questions right now.
I said five to 10 minutes, because I just, I was kind of, I want to feel out where everyone is, but if you want to stay and ask, and ask questions, I'm fine. I honestly didn't, I was thinking it was just getting really late and we had other things to get to as well, um, that this takes a lot of, um, you know, thought and, um, to get, you know, it's just, is, it was an option that I, I thought would be best for us to go back, read, you know, read through this and, um, and be more intentional in our questioning, but, um, we, we can take, we can take more time now if you'd like.
Dr. Martin, I may, um, I totally disagree with my, my colleague. However, I would like more time. I mean, it's a lot of information for me to be able to digest and kind of come back and generate some of those questions. I think that the offer of being able to have two-by-twos is not uncommon for us to be able to have a deep dive to those potential questions maybe answered. And then when we actually come back, we do have an opportunity for additional deliberation before we actually take any action, um, on the budget when we come back on the 16th. Um, but, you know, as the work that happens during the meeting, after meeting, and preparing for it, um, if there needs to be an additional, you know, if there is an opportunity to ask the chair, um, or if three members of the board decide that they want to be able to call a special call meeting, they can do that. I just want to note that on the 9th, though, I think we still have a student appeal from four to six. Is that right, Ms. K- Tanner? Next Wednesday?
Um, it's on the books, but it has not been verified yet.
Okay. Next Wednesday.
Student appeals hearing.
Yeah.
It's just such a placeholder.
Um, yeah, so, I mean, I, I like to just be able to kind of dive, it's a lot for me to kind of take some additional time.
Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I think we should have additionally, I don't think we need to go through the process of having three board members or two board members, whatever it is, to call a special call meeting. I just think we should plan it out and give you all an opportunity to do that. If we end up voting on the 23rd, it still gives us plenty of opportunity. This is a lot of information, uh, to try to absorb in one night, which was one of the reasons why I was recommending that we have more focused budget discussion meetings. I do have a couple of questions. One, um, the consultant's report on, uh, compression. Uh, from the, from the slide presentation, uh, my impression is, is that a report has been delivered or, or, uh, something has been delivered? Is that the case? And when was it delivered and can the board get a copy of it?
Certainly, the board requested the information, so we're more than happy to provide that. Um, it's been, uh, just a few weeks ago, I believe, the team received the report, or Mr. Billups and Mr. Jenkins. Um, they had just enough time to kind of peruse the report for us to talk about it, but they're still working with the consultants, this, which is why you don't have the actual plan. But we were trying to be proactive because the board asked me to go back and look at some things as we worked with the consultant to make some recommendations around that for the budget. So as quickly as we could with the time that we had, we came back, we did, we looked at the, uh, report, or we got some information from the report. We got pertinent team members together to make some recommendations around what we should do to move forward, to demonstrate action and commitment to doing something with the compression because it has been an ongoing issue, which is why we set aside, I believe, was the $2 million. We believe we will be able to at least start addressing, uh, a, a group of employees who were, who have been longest impacted, um, by the compression, and so that's why you have the recommendation before you. There still needs to be more ironing out of the, the details related to the full report. Again, we just recently got it and we are working as quickly as we can to, to make sure you have the information that you need. But we feel confident that at least with, um, what, what we're recommending now, that we can start some movement and, and be able to make some changes for a group of employees for next school year.
Right, the, the, when we had this discussion the last couple of years, part of the feedback from the staff, um, was that we didn't have the infrastructure or the capacity to know where each employee, uh, is. And so one of the things that I guess I'm trying to figure out is, do we have that now? Are we in a position where we know where each employee is or where each employee may be as a result of the work that this last consultant has done?
Mr. Jenkins, I'll let you address that, please.
The answer, the short answer is no. Um, we do not have, we, we cannot tell specifically without going through, as, as Dr., as Mr. Billups has said in the past, you actually have to look at a person's record and analyze what's there to know what sort of experience they had before they were hired, oh, I'm sorry, before they were hired, um, and the experience that they, we certainly know what their experience has been since they've been here. It's the experience they had when they came here that you, you can't gather from our personnel system, you would actually have to go to records. We have several thousand employees, um, and, um, within the time constraints, we certainly couldn't, neither we nor a consultant could, uh, look through those records. So we have information in our, in our, uh, computer that does indicate how long an employee has been here. The consultant's work was to look at, uh, the data in our HR, human resources system to determine how long they had been employed, how long they had employed, been employed in their current position, um, and then to make, to recommend a placement on a scale based on those two, those two issues, uh, placement on a 30-year, 30-point scale. So that was, um, we had data, uh, and I, I'm, I'm not really inclined to say we have a report from the consultant, but we have data, they have reviewed with us, and there are some conclusions, but, um, um, it's, it is just that at this point, it's data.
So, so for me, when, when we were having the discussion earlier about, uh, reversion funds and how we could use things, so this is, I think, at least the second year in a row where we haven't been able to make progress on, uh, identifying where, where staff are. And I thought, two years ago, we were saying that there were some resources that could be devoted to it, and then again last year. And so I still think that that is critical in order to make the progress that, that we say we want to make. And so I just would ask again, um, if there's, if it's been quantified in some way, what the resources are, the division needs to get the personnel salary and compensation information and records updated and in a system that would allow us to be effective and efficient going forward, that that be part of the information that we receive as part of our deliberations around what we fund. The other question.
If I could, if I could respond, please? Um, we do have information, we do have, we have data that does have a proposal that, uh, would place employees on a scale. Um, we, the data is not perfect, and we're exploring alternatives, um, to how we can get there. So we do have a plan that, or we are working on a plan that we feel can be implemented or can, can, we can start implementing in the coming year. And but we can, we will need to come back to you with the specifics of that plan. But we are working on something, uh, as Dr. Birdsong had said, our intention is to address this issue over a period, a relatively small, a short period of four years.
Right, and, and I respect that. I just want you to understand that when the board supported the research before, that's what we got before. We got a report, it was pretty detailed, we had a four-year commitment to try to bring folks up to, uh, place wherever they needed to be, and then it came out that we weren't doing that. So I'm, I'm not, I don't, I'm not expressing a lack of confidence in what you are reporting.
Well, we did include $2 million in the budget proposal to start implement, implementing it, so.
Right, no, I understand that.
That's your intention.
I got that. When we had the previous report, I can't remember the exact number, it may have been an estimate of $24 million over three, four years to get everybody on scale, whatever it was. So if there's some number like that, that's out there, then we should be including in our phase-in trying to, to get there. So I'm pleased to hear about $2 million, but it may need to be more. And so I don't want to pass another budget or let another budget cycle go by where we aren't clear on not just where the employees should be and deserve to be, but also that we have the infrastructure in place in order to, uh, accomplish the, the task. And so this is the first time we've gotten that, and I'm just sharing with you something that is of, of interest to me. The other thing, um, last May, we received a, a needs assessment, uh, from the administration, we were looking at student outcomes. And in the brief time that I've had an opportunity to read the presentation, hear the presentation, I still don't see a direct connection between the needs assessment that we did of where our students are and what should be prioritized, and how the proposed budget directly and specifically moves the needle on those student outcomes based upon the needs assessments that we've done. And so also, as part of the, the conversation going forward, I think that's something that, um, that as a board, we need to be clear on, that has been our number-one priority. We've talked about it in the, all the different plans we've had, um, accountability plan and so forth. And so accreditation is a good thing that we should be striving for. Our needs assessment, um, showed us beyond that, that there are some areas where we need to specifically give attention as we are dealing with our, uh, equity issues. And I think that the, uh, whatever the, the board's proposal that we submit to city council needs to scream out how we're going to, uh, advance student achievement just as much, if not greater than how we're going to build facilities. So, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, everyone. Um, moving on to our next item, we have our governance training vote. At our last meeting, um, we passed a, um, it was a resolution to have, um, to go ahead with committing to the contract for governance training with the Volburn Group. And so tonight, we are here to finalize that decision. So can I get a motion to, fin- can I get a motion to, um, continue with the Volburn Group for our governance training? Mm-hmm.
The last discussion that we had, there was going to be some communication around the, the work plan, and I thought there was information that was supposed to come back from the board to, uh, purchasing an attorney cloud to help develop a contract. Did that, did that occur?
I asked about that and never got an answer, so I haven't done any work.
Okay.
In connection with that, I thought that the decision had been made for Kelly Robinson to contact the contractor and begin the, prepare the contract.
And she did so, just to be clear, she did contact the contractor to let them know that they were going to be awarded the contract. And she also tuned into the meeting, she was aware that the board would be giving some, um, direction around what the, the contract needs to look like in terms of negotiation.
Okay.
That is not the work of the administration.
So we don't have the contract?
Well, I'm not sure I, I agree with that, but my, my point is, is.
Well, in terms of negotiating the contract, that I'm not the lead person on that back and forth with that negotiation.
Yeah, well, that's where I thought we, we left it, and so nothing has come back to say what the board has agreed upon and.
The previous.
And what the contract is. I'm sorry?
I believe the most, the motion was directing the superintendent to work with the attorney to develop what the contract would be and bring it back, so that we have something to vote on today.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That, that's the motion I made at last meet.
At the last meeting.
Just so I understand, so the board is asking me to do the contract and work, contact the contractor?
To work with the superintendent and anyone else to develop what that contract would be. So in lieu of knowing that that contract is not available, I move that we just table this until our meeting on the 16th.
Yeah, we'll do that, but I also want to point out that part of the, um, the part of what the Volburn Group has said, uh, on a few occasions is that this is a co-planning process and that we will work together. Um, they don't want to come in with a predetermined notion of what we're looking for, and that's part of the, um, the, the very, uh, from the very beginning of the governance training, that we will come to terms on what, what, uh, what our needs are. So just saying that again.
Yes?
I need clarification, please. I left the meeting thinking that the administration would be following up with the contractor to let, um, them know that they had been awarded the contract that was done. I was also left the meeting thinking that, um, Dr. Martin, on behalf of the board, would be working with the contractor to discuss the contents of the contract to move the, the next steps of the process forward. And that's where we left it, and that's the impression that I had and that Mr. Cloud had, so.
Well, I didn't get anything saying that any action had been taken, so I thought that, um, I thought that based on the motion that, that you guys were working with the Volburn Group, but I hadn't heard anything from them.
The, the issue.
I think they're waiting on contact, contact from you. I think that's what, they're waiting for your follow-up.
Table this and for the 16th, we'll, we'll, we'll get our act together. All right, um, next up, we have item 5.02, future agenda item suggestions. Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Dr. Birdsong, um, with our numbers, um, declining in the Hampton Roads area, um, that's a great thing, uh, and I know.
Which numbers? Can you specify which numbers?
The positive numbers for COVID-19. With those numbers, um, decreasing overall, there is, um, questions about when volunteers can come back into the school buildings. And I think it's a little bit more than just volunteers coming into the school buildings, but what is the volunteer process? What are we looking for? And so if there's an opportunity for discussion about volunteers in our buildings and, um, that process, and, um, when we might expect them to be in for the safety of our students, I would appreciate that, if, if that's, uh, something that the board would be, uh, willing to entertain for an agenda item.
Actually, I already have that on here. Great. But, so thank you for bringing it up.
But, so thank you for bringing it up. Ms. Bassinon and Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I, I support that request, and I was just curious if you could speak to what is coming down the road, starting with the budget. We've typically had two budget hearings. Where in this process do you see community engagement around the proposed budget?
We had a budget hearing at our, in December, and we're legally only required to have one.
I understand, I understand we're required to have one. We've historically always had two, where one was in response to the proposed budget. So where community members can actually, you know, look through the budget, see what our priorities are, and how we're allocating resources accordingly. So I was disappointed to see that there was no budget hearing planned for, for stakeholders to respond to the budget.
I mean, I would encourage people to email us and to show up at our March 16th meeting, and they can make comments during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Aside from that, is there, there were some requests, data requests made for the quarter one, school by school quarter one data from the report we received, I think it was in December. And then I expect that we'll probably get some sort of a report on quarter two. And this is quarter two grades, students failing two or more classes. I'd like to see that data as well, school by school, along with the chronic absenteeism, updated data for quarter two. That, similar to what we received in December.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
One, I'd just like to see the working list of items that we have. It's very difficult to talk about future agenda items without knowing what's already on the list and how we are planning that out. And I think we need to, we need to do that.
You're talking about the agenda, the suggest, agenda suggestions, or what?
Yeah, we, we've talked about future agenda items.
It's supposed to be on board docs. Ms. Tanner, can you go back and review? All right.
On the ongoing school board meeting, agenda items for 2020, 2021, 2022. The most recent one is from February 7th, and it's there.
Okay. Well, maybe what we need to do is enhance our communication so we know this stuff is there. So I will look at that, and I think if we have that discussion, we can talk about future agenda items based upon what's on the list. So I'm going to take my time and look at the list, and then I'll feedback.
Okay.
But I also would like to have a discussion about the role of the chair and the vice chair in, in decision-making. Because I think we need to make sure we're clear on what things are being done in the name of the board and that we're aware of it. So for example, the issue that Ms. Bassinon just raised about the public hearing, I was also looking to see when we were going to have that public hearing. And if it's some decision that we are no longer doing that, then I think it's important for, for us to know and to let the, let, let our stakeholders know, as we heard tonight. There was a, apparently, there's been a change in how individuals can sign up for public comment. I've emailed, and I've asked, and I've asked, and I've asked, and I've asked. Just been no response. Ms. Tanner gave me a response, which I appreciate it. But if the board policy says one thing, and others decide that the policy is not effective, then we should come and change the policy. But to just have our policies ignored or not followed, then to me sets up the entire division where when do we know when policies are going to be followed and when they aren't going to be followed. And I just think that there's this tendency that we have of not communicating with the board as a whole if we're going to deviate from, from, from our policies. So that is a concern that I have, and I think it's something that we need to talk about and, and be clear on so that we know what to expect and how that process works.
A hundred percent agree with you. If there's any deviation from the policy, we as a board would need to review that before, and to, you know, and make a decision, just like we would typically do. And there was no intention of deviating from any, you know, the, the signup process. Didn't, was not aware that we had until you brought it to my attention. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
With all due respect to that particular item, there's a difference between policy and practice. And I think that we all are aware that we were in the middle of a pandemic. And so the normal signup, we've even had public comment to be done virtually on Zoom, which our policy doesn't speak to that and doesn't speak to a, a practice of it. I think that we also have to have a little leniency in the respect that we are beginning to roll back into public, and that some of the practices that we've had to endure over the last year and a half may deviate from what you may see written on the policy, that nothing intentional is being done in the respect of not allowing individuals to have an opportunity to speak, but it may deviate. I do agree that if we're going to change anything, just like the policy states that the chair, the vice chair, and the superintendent create the agenda. That's in the policy. So if there's some deviation of that or concerns, board members have the ability to speak up and also ask the board members, and if you think the chair has put it in here to provide an opportunity for members of the board to ask for that. So I just would like to say in that, please, I don't think that there's anything being done maliciously to not have members of the community speak, but as we're be going, beginning to move back into public, that we have a little leniency in the respect of just kind of how we're doing that. And that, I, because I, I don't see anything in respect that you're trying to create opportunities for people to speak, but we're, we're rolling back into public. I mean, it's been, I mean, we're all been in this pandemic thing.
During the pandemic, the, the policy says that individuals that want to address the board may contact the clerk to do so and sign up in person. During the pandemic, we provided an opportunity for individuals to virtually contact the clerk and sign up. Moving back into in-person, which we're now almost a year in, we aren't doing that. And so when I inquired as to why we aren't doing that, the response that I got was that I needed to talk to the chair and the vice chair. So I sent correspondence to the chair and the vice chair and the superintendent and inquired about it because the impression I got was that there was some reason for that, for that change. So I don't disagree with you in terms of leniency, but when members of the public call down or to, or email to sign up to speak, and they're told that they can't sign up to speak early, and the policy says that, and has said it for 30 years, that you can, that is a, to me is a more than a leniency thing, and that's why I reached out to get clarity, so that we could make sure that we were straight with that. So we're saying now, moving forward, that citizens do have the right, based upon our policy, to contact the clerk, to sign up in advance if they wish to address the board at a, at a meeting, correct?
Yes. It's on email. Anyone can contact Ms. Tanner via email.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.